All right, I'm called over to the Tuesday, March 9th, six man of Dayton City Council's standing pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, um.
Yes, can you hear me on it?
Yeah, I can hear you, we can hear you. So, we had a little discussion prior to the meeting and what we are, we're of the understanding that you're, that you probably aren't allowed to vote because of your remote access.
Yeah, I just saw in this message, so, okay.
So, that was via our, our attorney and I, and I believe she's correct, but, um, so you, you will still, you'll still be online, you can still comment on these things, is that?
Yeah, that's what it is, that's what it is.
All right. Uh, so, I need a motion, second for the agenda.
I can make a motion, second.
Any discussion? We have to add gambling.
Uh, approval of gambling permit for, um, Wayne Festival for at the Dayton Bar.
Is everybody okay with putting that in consent, or do we want to pull that out?
It's fine, by me.
So, make it an F1.
Yes, please.
Okay, any other changes? Okay, so we got a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, motion carries four to zero, consent, I need a motion and a second.
Make a motion to approve, I'll second.
Any discussion? Um, I did have something, oh, item E, um, do we, when we get anything that'll trip a 60-day rule, do we somehow put that somewhere on a calendar or somewhere where it's, it's gonna pop up in front of four or five people so that it can't get missed? You know what I'm getting at?
Yeah, so Mayor Members Council, we will, we had that before and then we missed it based on the fact, I think there was some discussion at the Planning Commission and they decided to table it or something along those lines.
Yep, they did.
And that ended up tripping that 60-day rule, so what the error was at staff at that time was that we didn't notify the planning, which that they had to make a decision, they didn't have a choice. We had this come up at the last council, at the last planning commission meeting and Community Development Director Johnson vault had to let them know that we have to make a decision because we will trip a timeline, so, um, we are aware of the timelines and now there are more people involved to be able to help and assist that process, so it won't happen again, uh, this has already been approved technically, but, um, we want to have sure we have a paper trail.
No, I have no problem with that, I just don't want us to get caught on something that we would not like to be defaulted.
Oh, agreed, so there has been multiple items added to be able to make sure that we don't miss these timelines again.
Okay, um, I think that's all I had on consent.
You got my items, so we're good.
Scott, or, um, Dave, did you have any questions about consent?
Uh, no, not this time.
Okay.
Um, the payment and claims report was a little different this time, and it didn't have the descriptions of the purchases, but, um, you know, I know most of these vendors by now, so I kind of worked my way through it, but I'd rather have that included in the future.
Yeah, so, Mayor's Members Council, that was a change, um, this is an audit request, an auditor request of ours, we did not have time to get a custom report made in time before we could get the council packet out, so, that has been made, so you will see those and, and things that were revised from the auditors will be on the next packet, so you will see the descriptions again, so I apologize about this, um, I will send, if you guys want to see an individual one, I will resend this off, um, the descriptions on it, so you can have questions on them backwards, but.
And that was my request that we get this current one redone in the new format, so we can see it, because that'd be helpful. I'm okay approving it, but I want to, still want to see what they are and then we can ask questions.
We're not trying to hide anything, it was just a quick audit request and we didn't have time to make a custom report, so.
As long as we're on that, I've got two questions on there that I sent to Zach to ask him about, Dave, I'm also not a fan of this report either, but, uh, across the street, what's that, eighty-six hundred bucks?
I believe that is a production process, I'm looking it up right now just to make sure, I did not, I wanted to have time today, I didn't actually get time.
Okay, and then Salisbury Industries is also one that is not familiar.
Yeah, give me one half second, I'll have both those for you. I believe across the street is something related to our activity center, um, but, it's a production, production company.
Was it for like twenty-seven hundred bucks for Salisbury?
Salisbury.
For PD lockers.
Okay.
The across the street one is related to professional development for the fire department. Um, this is blue card training.
Oh, okay.
For twenty-five pinnacle firefighters.
Mm-hmm.
Blue card training, I believe, is like the new standard for fire department training, so if they're all, all departments are trained exactly the same.
Yep.
From what I understand.
Okay, it's a one-time deal.
Yep, and then, yeah, confirm that the one for, the chief was the Salisbury Industries for lockers, apologize about the delay.
All right, so we got a motion, a second, any more discussion? All those in favor with the amendment for the gambling permit, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, carries four to zero, you're good. Um, open forum, do we have anybody here for open forum? Do we have, come on forward.
For non-agenda.
So, open forum limited to three minutes for non-agenda items, um, state your name and address, no council action will be, ah, cool.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
No council action will be taken, items referred back to staff.
I just wanted to talk about, oh, sorry, my name's Caitlin Wade, I live at one five six zero nine, one hundred and sixteenth Avenue North in the Braverman Trails neighborhood. Um, so, I attended the meeting that they had at the Sundance Golf Course regarding Area Twenty-One Park, um, I know some of the plans that were up, that I guess that Paul did for us, aren't the ones that are going to be presented today, um, my concern was that we are, it looks like it is over budget, four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, so I was curious as to what happens to the contingency money, if it's not utilized, if it is still used for the Area Twenty-One Park, um, another resident, um, addressed the bathrooms and the location, I know that we were told that a well was not going to be dug, um, but now it looks like there will be one, um, as it was on the financial worksheet, um, so that's why we were told we couldn't have bathrooms, but we were told that porta-potties would be there and it's just not on the plot map that I saw, and then also with the, I guess, park furniture, um, kind of looking to what I added up, it came up to a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, and I was, I guess, curious if there is a single approved vendor that we have to go through, or if we can, I guess, shop around and find something, uh, specifically trash cans being two thousand dollars apiece is kind of outrageous to me, so I don't know why that cost is so high if we're already over budget, and also that extra money could be used for the playground area, or, I know people wanted tennis courts, I know that's probably out of the question because it's so expensive, um, but, that was the biggest concerns, that the other residents that I spoke to kind of talked about, um, and then the other one would be the cul-de-sac, which I think that doubles the price if we add the cul-de-sac, and then it looks here that there's two parking lots, but the price differs, but they hold the same amount of parking stalls, so I'm not sure why that is a four thousand dollar difference there either, it just, in my opinion, I've never been to a meeting like this before, I'm, I'm new to this, I'm a new homeowner, so, I guess my concern is, are we prioritizing the money in a way that is beneficial to the residents who are going to be utilizing the park? Like I said, when I saw the price for the trash receptacle at two thousand dollars, and I think there's going to be three of them at six thousand dollars, that's a lot of money that I think can be utilized elsewhere, um, so that's just my input, um, I don't know if my opinion and my thoughts are going to change because we didn't really get notified of what the park was going to look like until today, um, when the packet came out, so I'm not sure how many changes can be made, and then I would also be interested to see another financial worksheet breakdown of Phase One and Phase Two, like we received when we went to the meeting, I mean, it has individual itemized breakdowns, because the numbers are, some of them are quite different, um, than what was originally given to us on March Fourth, so I would just be curious to see why those numbers changed, and if the money, I guess, in your guys' opinion, is, is being used in a way that's beneficial for people going to the park, and it seems to me that maybe the park is more aimed towards adults and not children, because the play area is so small, um, I have a two-year-old son, so I imagine he's probably going to be using the park until he's about twelve, I don't see him utilizing the, the disc golf or the pickleball courts, and then also, one more quick, um, thing is the basketball hoops, two basketball hoops is thirteen thousand dollars, and we have one full basketball court, one hoop on each end, and then two more, if people are using these hoops, this can't be used, and if people are using these hoops, these can't be used, so that's thirteen thousand dollars that can be utilized somewhere else, it just doesn't make sense to have four basketball hoops on one full basketball court, um, I think that's all I have, though, um, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, this is gonna be talked about at the end of the meeting, so if you're gonna stick around, okay.
Caitlin, there's a future on council for you.
Uh, anybody else? Anybody online?
I do have someone with their hand raised that will allow us to talk.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, uh, my name's Eric Sepulvede, I'm a resident at one one five three four Braverman Trails, excuse me, um, so also just commenting on the later agenda item, um, I think first of all, just, I'd like to voice support in the proposed plan, um, and to include all features of the Phase One, including playground, basketball court, pickleball court, and sand volleyball, um, even though it is being over the allocated budget, um, but by utilizing the budget strategies that I think are going to be discussed later, um, or other means possible, um, I think one feature not on the, included on this proposed plan, but on a preliminary plan was the food truck parking roundabout, um, I think the original design, although quite appealing, was likely more than necessary and contributed to being over budget, although not a necessity, given the popularity of regular food trucks in other neighborhoods and the high participation at infrequent food truck events in the Braverman neighborhood, I do see this park design as an opportunity to more appropriately accommodate this type of activity, I guess what my recommendation would be is to make the, the parking lot design, um, so that it can effectively accommodate a food truck, um, I think this simply boils down to maybe the, the parking stall orientation, orientation especially, um, related to handicap parking, since that could, um, either one, make it non-handicap accessible, or two, non-food truck accessible, um, by violating handicap parking spots, um, I think doing so would provide a designated area for this type of activity, rather than being on the street, which creates safety concerns and undue burden on whichever homeowner the food truck parks in front of on the street, I think these are issues that could ultimately would lead to this activity being unwelcome, uh, I think the final topic with this is just, I wanted, I saw there's mention of a CDAA donation for a formal baseball field in Phase Two, I guess I'm not aware, and maybe this might be discussed later, of the specifics of this as to whether it's been accepted, if council will be deciding on this tonight, or if it was simply an idea, uh, to be further discussed during Phase Two planning, um, personally myself, I have no strong feelings either for or against this at this time, but since it had not been discussed at Park Commission, Council, or Community Open House meetings prior, I guess I don't feel it would be appropriate to make any final decision on this tonight, as it ultimately takes away, uh, one quarter of the park space from the neighborhood, depending on, I guess, the usage schedule of CDAA programming, and also limits the type of use for that quadrant specifically when not being used, um, for baseball, um, I guess I'd personally like to know for what ages that field would be used, how the use scheduling works, um, and those sorts of logistics before, I guess, being okay accepting that CDAA collaboration and donation, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, so we're done with, um, open forum, staff, consultant, council updates, Zach?
Yes, um, good evening, Mayor Members of the Council, I only have one update tonight, and I don't have a full update, I just wanted to let you guys know that we did get, um, a decision made, or decision made by the appellate court for our housing first case, um, I don't have anything specific to give you because I don't have the memo from our attorneys yet, but I do want to let you know that, um, part of it was affirmed, um, as in they confirmed the decision made by the district court, part of it was reversed, and part of it was remanded back to the district court, so.
Which part was reversed? Um, standing?
The standing, yes, correct.
Okay.
Yep, so, um, I will have a full memo to the council later on, once I get that from our attorneys, but just wanted to provide you an update that we did get something which was good, bad, and indifferent, so.
So, there was a secondary part to that, the original ruling, is that what was affirmed? Or do we know?
Yeah.
Um, Mayor Members of the Council, I'm not litigation counsel on this, on this case, so I'm not, and it was, and it started before my time here, so it's, I'm not sure I can answer your questions. Um, so, as I understand the, the opinion, um, there, the, the court decided that they do have standing to seek the declaratory action, or declaratory judgment and the injunctive relief, I'm sorry, declaratory relief and injunctive relief, um, but that, um, the, the district court was, um, did not make a mistake in dismissing, um, the claims, the takings claims and the due process claims.
Well, that, and that's the important part.
Right.
Okay.
And so, the, it was, to, I mean, since I'm not as familiar with the case as your litigation counsel from Greenusville, um, it seems to me that it's not really clear what the district court is supposed to do now with the part that's been remanded, but hopefully they'll figure it out.
Correct, so, as soon as I have memo, I will gladly provide them.
And they will.
They'll give us like, yeah.
Okay.
They'll give an update, we'll have them come into the council, so give a full update to you guys ahead of that.
Cool, okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Amy?
Um, I just have a reminder that the April ninth meeting is our local Board of Appeals meeting, um, so if residents, um, are wanting to appeal the valuation of their properties, that they still need to contact the county first, but then we'll have that open board meeting, um, where you have the opportunity to come and have comparables, and, um, the council can make a decision on, um, adjusting that.
All right.
Mayor and Council, I only have a couple of updates, uh, we did find a used bucket truck that we put an offer in on, um, uh, the bucket truck comes in total tax, uh, total price with tax and title and all the other bits and pieces is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, um, so we're under budget, um, by twenty thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine of the hundred and fifty that we were going to, that we budgeted, it's a twenty sixteen freight liner, it's got fifty-one thousand miles, and it's got nine and hu, nine and a half thousand engine hours on it, um, it's gonna be delivered in the next week or two, um, we did get thirty days of warranty on it, so we're gonna work it hard for thirty days.
Thirty days.
Thirty days, yeah.
So, we'll not let it start.
It's something, you know?
Yep, yep, no, that's, yep.
Better than nothing for used equipment, so.
Yeah.
Um, and then, um, tomorrow, uh, we've been plowing pretty hard the last couple of days, um, the guys are just finishing up now, um, there's gonna be a couple of guys in tomorrow morning just checking for drifting, they'll be in around five o'clock, um, checking for drifting and slick spots, but, uh, that's where we're at.
All right, Gavin.
Mayor, Council, Firewise, no updates currently from last two weeks.
Evening, Mayor Members of the Council, my only update is our two new hires will be starting April eighth, um, they are brand-new guys, um, so it'll be a busy full FTO program throughout the summer.
John.
Jason.
Amy?
Not for me either.
I'm good, I'm good.
I got nothing?
I just want to say thanks to staff for keeping the streets plowed and all the first responders that helped during the snowstorm, so I know it puts extra burden on everyone, so thank you for the long hours for that, that's all you.
All right, on to council business. Dave, have you got anything you want to say? Dave, do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
All right, uh, item G.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to give an update on where we are with this, it's kind of an odd purchase because we didn't have phone pricing, and we had to act pretty swiftly on this, so I just wanted to give you an update, some of the items came in above price, some came in below price, that was our best guess, um, but generally speaking, um, we didn't break the CIP budget, um, there's some money left from twenty twenty-three that wasn't spent, so, um, I just wanted to have some transparency with you guys and keep you up to, up to speed where we're at with it, and the, all the, the trucks have been, uh, we've got chassis for four of the vehicles, one is still outstanding, and they're all in production with bodies and that kind of stuff now, so, we're in good shape.
All right, anybody have any questions, Bob? Item G. Okay, then we're on to item H. Okay, then we're on to item H.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, hold on, click on the, click on the powerpoint ones. Nope, 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 go back. Uh, make sure that's small, in the bottom corner. Far left, bud. There you go.
All right, okay. Okay, uh, first item, or item H is for River View Village, so this is, uh, two properties located at one si- one six three six one Dayton Avenue and one eight five four one Levy Street. So it's the, uh, southwest corner of, um, Dayton Avenue and Levy Street. Uh, previously, this was two single-family hot homes. Uh, the homes have been removed. Uh, the applicant is proposing to, uh, subdivide these two lots, which means moving the property line around, uh, to the, to the west a little bit. Uh, it would still be two lots, but, uh, we would have a three-plex, one three-plex on each lot, so six units total. Uh, the application has a cut, three different parts to it. The first is a zoning map amendment for the west property. Uh, the second is the preliminary and final plant, and then third is site plan review. Uh, this was previously reviewed as a concept plan by the council in January, I believe. This is a detail of the zoning map. And the historic framework plan, so within the historic framework plan, uh, the guideline is for townhomes, roughly at eight units, whereas, uh, the proposal is for six. So the eight units is kind of a, it's intended as a guide, not a, something that's set in stone. Uh, critical issues, uh, staff had requested an alleyway that would cross the mid-block, uh, from east to west. The primarily, primary function of the alleyway would be to service, um, potential future commercial properties along Robinson. So the assumption is, is that as properties on Robinson redevelop, there, there's likely going to be a limitation as far as driveway access on the Robinson Street, and so the main access uh, for customers and for employees would be off of the alleyway. Within the city code, uh, there's a requirement for either twenty-five feet of right-of-way in commercial areas and twenty feet for residential. Uh, the planning commission recommended twenty feet, so, uh, this would be twenty feet of right-of-way, but, uh, twelve feet paved and be centered on the rear property line. Um, with this pro- this project is roughly a quarter of the block size, and so right-of-way, right-of-way would be dedicated with the plant, and alleyway would not be built until there's an actual need, so we're essentially as the development, or as the block redevelops. During the planning commission meeting, we kind of just had a discussion of, um, I'm gonna say two examples, one from Minneapolis and one from Osseo, of sixteen feet of right-of-way versus twenty feet, and again, the planning commission recommended twenty feet. Let's see, what else? Within, uh, the city code, there's a, a requirement that pushes buildings, as much building along the, the street fringe as possible, um, or six, I'm thinking sixty-five percent of the fringe would need to be building. Um, this is the first project, I'm aware of, a first redevelopment project since we've adopted this section of the code. If we were following the code, it would need to be, the building would need to be eighty-five feet in depth on that corner property, whereas what's being proposed is sixty-six feet. Uh, this was brought up during the concept plan review, which the council was okay with it as it is. Uh, the planning commission also recommended to keep it as it is at sixty-six feet. Uh, the following is kind of a breakdown of architectural requirements, and just to, to kind of keep it short, is that the project is compliant with city code. There we go. That's the next project. So, once again, what this is asking for is, is a zoning map amendment, a preliminary and final plant, and a site plan. Um, the applicant is requesting return for, uh, dedication right-of-way for an alleyway. The applicant is requesting reduction in fees. Should also mention that within the resolution, there's fees that are incorrectly stated, so we'll fix those before it's signed.
They're the old fees, right?
Yeah, so during the review, final review process, um, it was noted that the fee should be calculated based on twelve units per acre, as this is being developed at twelve units an acre and not, um, residential. So residential is, um, much larger, because it's expected only have one single-family home, so it would then cost or take up more dollars in order to feed that project with water, sewer, trails, parks, whatever. Um, the costs are sn- less, or significantly less, depending on which way you look at it, for a higher density, um, building, and that's what these ones we've classified as, so it significantly reduces the fees per, um, per, per, or per unit. And then we are giving credit for two units because it has been previously paid from those two previous homes, so.
Have a good one, come on.
Just, sorry, I've been providing you, the information difference in those fees is roughly, I think it's like sixty-nine thousand dollars for all the fees that were in the, listed in the packet. The total fees at the end, if you did the other, um, the correct, where it was twelve units per acre, it would be roughly twenty-seven thousand dollars, so it is a significant amount of difference.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the council, city staff, and the residents of the great city of Dayton. It is an honor to be here, myself and my partner-wife, Aram. Uh, uh, we will both apologize in advance. Uh, I've had the second round of the bug this season. I'm on about a weekend nap into it, so I apologize for the coffee in advance. She's right in the thick of it, so don't shake her hand, for sure. Well, Mr. Mayor, uh, and council, this has been a, a great experience. It's been an experience that's been well over a year. And what I mean by great is talking with residents, with stakeholders, going back and forth with council, with staff, incorporating feedback, doing market research, trying to get the ideas for the highest and best use of the land. Many of those features, uh, obviously have changed, uh, with each meeting we've had, EDA, uh, Planning Commission, round one, round two, City Council, round one, this is round two. And I highlighted some of those last time, but I would, uh, just want to highlight this time. Since the last time we saw this, uh, we added a window, uh, on, on both ends of each, uh, building. We, do you have a slide at your fingertips for the first floor plan?
Ye- yes, but not with the revise. Oh, uh, no.
Okay, so one, uh, oh, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
So that was, that's one change. Another would be the parking lot in the rear. Uh, if you, I, you probably don't have the, the previous version, but we, a recommendation from the, the planning commission was to change the furthest, uh, portion of the asphalt from the property, uh, getting rid of the green space between them, so we, that addition has been incorporated. One of the things that was noted, uh, uh, by one of the, the contract subcontractors we were getting a bid from, are those upper-level uh, master bedroom Juliet balcony French doors, that, that they would open inwards, not a problem, but our intent would have been to have a screen door on the, on the exterior, which would open outwards, and a Juliet balcony would prevent uh, those from opening outwards, if that makes sense. So what we're doing, we're toying with several different ideas, but what we have incorporated here is an actual, uh, balcony, I guess they call it a French balcony. It's just, just enough to clear the doors, and then it's using the header on the front of the porch there to, to, uh, hold the far end up, if that makes sense. And then, uh, Mr. Mayor had a, a question, why, uh, last time, why is that, in this particular depiction, the unit on the far left flipped? And I didn't think about it at the time, but the reason it's flipped is the kitchen is on the far left-hand side. In order to give the kitchen and those bedrooms on the upper level an exterior window, it has to be flipped in order to allow for that window access, so that's the reason why it's, it's not three identical in a row. I think those are the changes that, uh, have been incorporated, so yeah, we can stand for any questions. Uh, I will, let me just briefly also point out two items. So one item, it's in the council packet, it's in the resolution, and it was discussed and recommended by the planning commission, but I just want to submit to your, for your consideration. So if you're looking at the resolution, it has a further, it begins with, "Further therefore it be resolved." And I would draw your attention to item number two, where it lists the number of trees that are required based on the square footage, if you see that. Uh, one of them is, uh, the very first listed is one over-the-story tree, so that'd be one per lot. What the planning commission's recommendation is, and there's a, a site plan in here. Trying to find that now. The site plan, the, of those two trees, the planning commission was recommending to put them in between the asphalt. My concern is, if we want to do that, we certainly can. I'm not convinced that's gonna be optimal, though, because in my conversations with Elkhiver Utilities, they, what they want to do is the, the overhead line runs east to west in the rear of the property. And they're gonna want to come down either the side, wrap around to the front, and come up the middle, the other side, or most likely, they're gonna come right down that. And so I don't want to put those two trees smack on top of a roughly a forty-eight foot, uh, inch power line. So, just, I'm, what I guess what I'm looking for, not opposed to the tree, I just, I, I would think give some flexibility on, on the, the ideal placement of where those trees would go. Oh, and then one other thing I would, uh, draw attention is the, the, the right-of-way, which, uh, John brought up. So, the, I, I ha- I do have concern over that. I'm not opposed to the right-of-way. I think that's needed for the redevelopment of this area. What I, one of the things that, that I'm always, uh, seeking as part of these conversations in this redevelopment is reasonableness and fairness. And one of the things that I've gleaned from residents of the Old Village, they have a high concern in, in the feedback I received, and I think even some of you have received the feedback in last summer, uh, eminent domain gets fluttered around, city confiscation, taking a property, et cetera, et cetera. So one of the things with that sentiment out there, I, I, as the Old Village gets rezoned, it's gonna, right now it's all zoned RO. It's gonna have to be rezoned to, uh, Jimu Three or something else. And I'm not sure that it's reasonable if the city's intent is to, to have right-of-way, to, to achieve the right-of-way need for all the, the areas of the blocks by, uh, the developer's concession. I, I, I have a concern of that, so that's why I try to come up with a very reasonable, justifiable number that I'm looking for, for that right-of-way, uh, and that I think was highlighted or at least included in the packet.
That was in your, yeah, your, uh, critical issues. Yes, I, yeah, I guess I have some questions on that. Um, I don't see that. So this property, the, the other properties will certainly benefit, especially the ones along Robinson, all the way across benefit from this, but this property, I, I, to me, it, I don't see a benefit there whatsoever for this, this alleyway, this right-of-way. And I, I, and to me, I also kind of wonder why we wouldn't, in getting that, since the city wants that, and I think it's a good idea to have it for the whole block, why we wouldn't have some sort of a, um, value to that and reimburse for that. So.
So ti- typically, typically, we're not buying right-of-way from developers. So this would be possible.
I, I would add that if a business, like a grocery store goes in behind them, it's gonna, even if it's a small little grocery store, it's gonna increase property values by having that there, so there is a direct impact to them, depending on what goes in there and when it gets redeveloped, so I'm not saying we should or shouldn't pay for it, but I think there is a way to say that this is going to impact you beneficially in the future, and we're not taking it right now, it's just there for when, when that goes through. But I also don't think that the people living there want, you know, semis driving up on their spaces, people things are getting delivered or box trucks or whatever, so I think it behooves them in that manner as well.
Yeah, I, I get that it'll, you know, benefit to the city. I just don't get why we don't think it has any value, or why we don't, why we just want that as a, as a freebie, I guess, so to speak. Um, I know when we did, when we did West French Lake, that was a redevelopment of the road. Um, we decided that we would pay them for that property that we took. Took may not be, may light people up, but, um, we negotiated with them for that right-of-way. I mean, today, this property doesn't have to give up that right-of-way. So that's why I'm, I'm wondering what, why, 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 why we don't think that has, um...
My only question to that is, is how did we come up with that value?
In the packet?
Yeah. How did we come up with the ninety-nine eighty-five?
Yeah. And that was just straight math.
Yeah, so the, I was trying to come up with something just fair, reasonable, equitable, so if I, uh, if the fair market value is approximately a hundred and fifty thousand of the entire roughly half acre, and the amount of the right-of-way being stopped by the city, a percentage isn't a six-point something percent, I just simply took six-point whatever percent of the total square footage is how I came up with that, just I have ten thousand dollars, yeah.
How much did you, you got a dis- bit of a deal on one of those lots, right? For sure, I don't know about the first one, but the second one that you recently received, that was on my arguably low market value price that you got that lot, or from the city, correct?
That one was a price thirty-six thousand, roughly.
Thirty-six, yeah.
That's what we, yeah, I think what we paid for.
Yeah.
Yeah, what we paid for.
That was my loss, but.
Yeah.
So which, which in, in a sense means the other parcel, your parcel.
I paid well above that.
Yeah.
And then the improvements.
Thirty-five.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, no.
And then I had to pay, but I had to do improvements, or I should say, uh, teardown of the house that was on there. But then, since acquiring both properties, we have done improvements even to the, the property we purchased from the city, such as, uh, there were multiple trees in there and having to take those, uh, out, and there was a sidewalk in there that we've had to have removed. So my point is, it contributes to the post-sale value of the property. And then obviously, two parcels, a larger space, is valued more due to assemblage than a single parcel is. Again, I would reiterate, I'm not opposed to the, the, whether it be twelve-foot or twenty-foot right-of-way, it's just something that, to be reasonable.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure the council's aware. Currently, we have not historically paid for right-of-way. If you, not saying we should or shouldn't, but I'm just saying this is what we've historically done, and then making.
Development or redevelopment happening.
What, yeah, when development or redevelopment is happening, we are not paying for right-of-way. Uh, historically, like I said, I'm not providing a, an opinion, I'm just.
Have we had redevelopment?
Um, I don't know if we had redevelopment. We've definitely had development, though, when we've gotten right-of-way for, um, zero dollars.
Right.
Um, as in concessions.
Through one of those developments at zero dollars.
Correct.
That was a huge amount of space. I guess what I'm getting at is, is that.
And so this may, if you make a decision tonight, I'm not saying yea or nay, I just want to make sure the council's aware that this will probably set precedent for anything in the future, that we may have to pay for right-of-way in the future if this decision is made tonight, and not, not providing any more opinion, then here's what's going to happen, so I just want to make sure everyone's aware.
If we didn't pay you for that land, would you stop the entire project?
No.
Okay. But I would also submit for the council's consideration, again, if the intent is to have the, the alleyway through each of the six blocks that are down there, consider forward how, what's gonna have to happen. Is it the council's intent and policy they're gonna move forward to try to acquire the right-of-way from all of those private property owners in a manner of no concession? Right, again, this is a redevelopment, it's not a development, it's not a PUD, it's a, so the dynamics are slightly different, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, so I, I also wouldn't say there's no concessions. I would say the fact that, like, the city doesn't want eighty feet long on the one side, even though it's part of the code, that's a concession. I would add that there's other things we've worked with, you haven't listed in the planning commissions, that are concessions, so I think it might be a bit strong to say we're offering no concessions. I think that we've worked well together. I think this is a priority for the city. I think it's a, should be a priority for the whole, um, historic village that this area be redeveloped in a manner that has forethought. And in my mind, having this right-of-way is part of that, and I think it actually, if you do get businesses on the the backside of this, does increase the land value, and having that, those businesses aren't gonna want to be there if there's no alleyway and no access, so by de facto, it is benefiting, and this is my opinion, everyone's all their opinion, this is my opinion on it. Um, I think there's other ways we might be able to work with you, too. I think, you know, the tree situation is interesting. I would, I would ask, and we gotta get the trees in the property, I think it's important, can we put the trees between the road and the sidewalk?
I think that came up, and there was no, there was no way to do that, right? I thought it came up at the plant.
Cause a lot of cities put trees in that area. It's a good alternative, it doesn't eat up the space, which is.
In the Boulevard area?
Yeah, in the Boulevard, yeah.
Did, did you say between the road and the sidewalk, or between the sidewalk and the?
The road and the sidewalk, so north of the property.
So that would, oh, oh, right.
Yeah, put your trees there, so then you don't have to put your trees on the property, you don't block your power line.
Okay, so, can it go there? Yes.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to do that because one of the values of those balconies is the view of the river, and you don't want to be obstructing the river.
Okay.
But then second, that's also a ten-foot easement there, and so there will be utilities running along the front, whether it be natural gas, um, and likely the, uh, cable.
I just wanted to throw it out as an option, so that was a.
There may be something where we could do a different type of tree, just based on the, you know, the things that are on there. You got the, um, electrical poles that are there, and then you have the, you know, you know, the things that are on there. You got the, um, electrical poles that are there, and then you have the, you know, you know, maybe you want to put instead of having those things, maybe you want to put some sort of arbivides that would basically block those townhomes from that alleyway. That might be some sort of concession or some sort of change we could make. Um, I, and these are just options that I'm laying out here, only because the code says, here's what it is and not.
That was my next suggestion, was instead of the shrubs, maybe we just do something taller than a shrub, but shorter than a tree on the far side to block where the windows aren't. Like, I think there's things that we can work together on for that. I, I think that the city, the council and the planning commission, and yourself have all been reasonable throughout this entire thing. I don't think that requiring the easement for when that's needed, whether that be five years from now or fifty years from now, is a, is a, anything that we wouldn't expect from anyone else developing land in Dayton today. So that's where I stand on it. I don't think it's an eminent domain thing. I think it literally is just, this is going to be needed to develop this area properly. And so it's better to have it, and then it's there when we need it, because it will, I think, in the long term, benefit those homeowners and the property values of those homes, having good access. So businesses want to be there, and we get good quality businesses on the main drag there. So that's my thoughts. I don't know about the end of the table, which y'all are thinking.
No.
I agree.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, then, uh, and that, uh, no, and then to reiterate, Mr. Mayor, to Councilmember Tross's question, no, that would, this would not, is not contingent upon the project.
Any other questions or?
I, oh. I had a question, but I don't know if you'd point us out. So, the question I had, there was a comment during the planning commission about using hardy board on the siding versus vinyl siding. My question actually isn't, I don't candidly, I don't care from a visibility standpoint what it is. I'm not worried about that. My concern, and, um, thank you Assistant Chief Astor for being here, is those buildings are really close together, and vinyl, my understanding, that is minimal, not working in fire, is vinyl is fairly flammable. Where hardy board being a concrete material is not as flammable. What I'd like your opinion, would it, would it help? Uh, my concern is west building catches on fire, we wanted, it's, we wanted everything we can to make sure that the, then east building doesn't catch on fire. So I'm more concerned between the buildings than the outsides of them, if that would make a difference in how quickly that fire may jump from one building to the next, being to close proximity.
Mayor's member of the council, uh, obviously, big concern is fire suppression with this building, it's such a large building, access, uh, from that point. Obviously, for exterior, hardy board, cement board's going to be most fire resistant, brick's going to be fire resistant, stucco. Um, you know, we're going to be wanting to look at something like that for exterior, at least on the adjacent sides or the joint sides, where you have the exposures off to the west, to the south. Uh, obviously, we have road access north and east, so that isn't a huge concern. Uh, but really covering those exposures to the south and to the west, not just one building to the next building, but also looking at the neighbor's house.
Correct.
Is a big concern.
So I think from a siding perspective, that's where, and I think even the planning commission brought up, unless there's a, I can't remember who it was, but someone had said, unless there's a fire concern. Um, so I think we should be considering a better, from a safety perspective, for both yourself, insurance, and the homeowners and those around there, that on the far west and in between the two buildings, we for sure consider options that are more fire retardant than vinyl. So I don't know if that was in the, as a decision we had to make, but I think it is something that we should be seriously thinking about, because we already have a water issue in the, when it comes to putting out fires in the historic village anyways, due to lack of pressure, and so.
I mean, this is going to be sprinkled, right?
Yep.
So that's a lot of money, what you just talked about, so.
Mayor members of the council, too, uh, with the Minnesota twenty twenty residential code, uh, townhomes like this would require sprinklers.
So, Mr. Mayor and, uh, uh, Councilmember Tross, specifically, it's thirteen D, is the residential fire suppression system that is required to be in here, and it would be part of this design. Uh, additionally, I've been speaking with Mike from Metro West, the building inspector, and, uh, properties that are within five feet of the property line, which these would be, there is a, a fire resistant, uh, uh, sheathing that is used, rather than the traditional, uh, sheathing that is used. So that is.
Underland.
You've got that covered.
Correct, yeah, exactly. And then the third I would just submit for consideration is, uh, all the market research we've done, looking at all of the developments, uh, that of a similar nature, uh, compact, such as the one in Anoka, the, the development in Anoka, such as the one in Rogers, and, uh, Southern Dayton and Northern Maple Grove, they're all approximately, uh, eight feet apart. It's very similar circumstance here, and they're all vinyl siding.
I think as long as, if you're as good with it, I'm good. I didn't know that the sheathing, so thank you for the information. It's valuable to know.
Just to add to that, so within the city code for GMU three, it does not allow for vinyl, like, when this went through council, the concept plan, also the planning commission, they were not opposed to vinyl.
I'm not opposed to it either. I'm more worried about the, yeah, yeah. I'm not opposed to the appearance of it. I'm more worried about the safety aspect of it. So, yeah, I care about the appearance.
Mayor's under the council, uh, with the exterior, uh, I think we do need to look at the cement board or brick, uh, the, like I said, the exposures. Obviously, when it comes to the north side or east side, doing vinyl on those sides, I think is acceptable. Uh, but potentially looking at a mix of both, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if brick were required, that would put a crimp in this, because grip, uh, brick is, is cost prohibitive. Uh, when you have multiple si- uh, siding types, that also, uh, creates different types of challenges, uh, when it comes to putting those together. So I would not be in favor of a mixture like that, so.
I mean, most of the new homes built in Dayton are hardy board, at least in a lot of the neighborhoods, are hardy board in the front and vinyl on the sides. So it's, it, having a mix of them is, I would say, almost standard across all the developments that we see in the city. And I speak for, because that's what my house is, hardy board in the front and vinyl on the side in the back, so.
Yep.
And we didn't have a choice in it. You had to have at least that, so. I, I don't know.
I, my, my experience was not, not the single family in the other neighborhoods. It was the market research, it was the more compact, it was the townhome styles, is where we saw the, the vinyl. Because again, the, the objective is, uh, overall, where, uh, the, the numbers have to work, overall.
Yeah.
And so when you're in the, uh, the townhome, uh, financials are obviously different than, than different styles, so.
I don't disagree. It's something that you're worried about.
Yeah, he's meeting code, so I mean, I'm, I'm good with it.
Maybe just have the trees to figure out, I think.
The two trees in the parking lot.
Currently, currently, code does not allow vinyl, so I just want to make sure.
No, 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 he's not putting vinyl, vinyl in.
Yeah, he is.
Along the two sides, he's not.
Yeah, he is. He's been vinyl on the enti- everything but the front.
I got the planning commission kind of hashed this through, and now.
I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page, not trying to put any.
No, thank you for that.
Well, so what are we deciding here? Because I thought the planning commission had hammered this out.
They had, the only thing, when I listened to the plan, the one thing I took away is unless there's a fire concern between the two buildings, they're okay with vinyl. But if there's a fire concern, then they thought we should take that into account. That's what I got from listening to it.
There you go. You're good.
Um, but if the sheathing is fireproof, do we still have a concern?
Can you repeat that, please?
If the sheathing is, is already.
Underneath the vinyl.
Is it required to be fireproof? Okay, the sheathing is already fireproof.
That is true. So I mean, the sheathing is FR rated, uh, but as Councilmember Tross said, uh, it, it does burn fast. It is plastic. It burns hot. It burns fast. There is a greater exposure to adjoining or adjacent buildings.
Yeah.
Uh, we just need to take that into consideration.
How close do the buildings be? I don't know if it's in the plans. I missed it completely.
There are eight feet between the buildings, and again, this matches the, the multiple developments we saw, the most.
I'm not, I'm not worried about that. I just wanted to know how, how far we're talking. Cause I think, uh, I thought there was a development, not seagull, where the houses were like twelve feet apart. By the time the fire department got there, it was like three houses down because of the vinyl was so flammable. It's, I know, that's just, that, isn't it, happened a while back?
That's seagull.
Yeah, balcony, I think it was twenty, twenty fifteen, was that seagull fires?
That was, that was wind driven as well.
Uh, I would say it was wind driven, but I mean, even the houses, probably sixty, eighty feet across the street were melted.
Yeah, because vinyl burned top, so.
Nearly every house in Dayton, if, if it goes up.
Yeah.
I, I don't disagree with that. My point is, these are significantly closer together, four feet out the property line compared to most homes.
So to, to try to narrow this down a little bit, like, either way, it's got to meet building code.
Yep.
So the overall question is, the, the city code for the GMU three district does not allow for vinyl. The question is, are you okay with superseding that and saying vinyl is okay?
I, I, I've never.
I'd like, I'd like to weigh in at some point.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I'm not really up there. I'm just out here somewhere. Um, so, um, I'm less concerned about the siding material only because these are fully sprinkled buildings. And so that's, that makes them different from every other single family home in, in Dayton, because we don't require that. Unless the struc- you know, commercial structures are different and all of that, but I, I really think that's an important piece of the puzzle, is that these are fully sprinkled buildings, and that the fire has a low likelihood of spreading to, engulfing the outside of the building and then spreading to the next. So I, personally, I'm not concerned about the siding material, and particularly, which we just learned tonight, that the sheathing material has to have a fire rating of some kind. So I, I think that's, that's adequate for me, and, you know, and the, the vinyl versus hardy board, of course, I would, if I was choosing for my own house, it would be hardy board, but I understand the economics of it, and this, it's close to picking colors, which I don't do. So that's, that's my, that's my opinion around that one. I know I'm not voting tonight. Um, I, but as long as I'm talking, I might as well get my other two things out here. As far as the right of way goes, I think that if we were using eminent domain, which we are not, we would be required to pay for that right of way. And so I don't really have an issue with us, um, and I think by using the strategy that was in the Paddock Act, which was to go to a price reduction in the sale of the lot versus fee reductions, which we've done for other kinds of buildings, maybe we're setting less of a precedent, and also that this is a redevelopment versus now doing something in a cornfield where we, where we ask for a road space and so on. Uh, and lastly, probably least important, uh, Eric, is that uh, I have several French doors on my house where only one, one side is operable, and so you can have a sliding screen on the other side that, that works, so that's something for you to, you know, take for whatever you think it's worth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, Councilmember Fashon. Uh, we had, we had considered the, the, the one that was fixed. We'd also, and get this, uh, the retractable screen that would pull from the side, it's like fifteen to two thousand dollars, fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars.
You can get trash can for that.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, uh, whether reinvesting in retractable screen, let's just put a balcony on there.
So I think, I agree with Councilmember Fashon on that as well. So I think I'll motion that we approve it with the right of way, not paying for it, and leaving this, knowing that there's a fire rating and a sprinkler system, leaving the siding concerns up to the, um, applicant. We haven't figured out the trees yet, now that I think about it, but that'd be my motion. I don't know what we're into with the trees.
Oh. Okay, so are you talking about the preliminary plat? I'm assuming.
Preliminary and final plat, yeah.
Those two trees, you just got to find a better spot.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, the challenge of the trees is, we don't want to put them in the right of way, or in the future right of way. We have to cut them down in the future. We don't want to put them, obviously, in the asphalt. We don't want to put them in a position that's in the front, uh, easement, and potentially blocking the Mississippi River. So really, the only options are between the, or in that small space between the asphalt and the right of way, which I think might be the, end up where it's, uh, ends up where it would be, or they would be. Uh, potentially, there is roughly, I think, thirteen feet of space between sidewalk and building. That's in the good spot, I think, but that might be better for, for pine, rather than over the story, and then, uh, the third would be where, where they are. But I guess, well, I'm just requesting for flexibility. I, I want to put them where they're going to be the best, so.
Could we allow the money that would be spent on trees to be given to the city to plant trees in the park across the street? That services the community, including these residents, and.
I think the overhead associated with that would outweigh its, its cost benefit.
So the planning commission's intent and the recommendations, so the, the code requires four trees. And the planning commission's recommendations, four trees and at least two tr- two of those, whether it's two additional trees or two out of those four, um, overstory trees be planted in the parking lot island. So the idea is, is you're providing some shade in the backyard. If it doesn't work for utility purposes, then it doesn't make any sense to have those two extra trees. Otherwise, those tru- two trees can be pushed between the parking lot and the alleyway, um.
Or you just eliminate them.
You might have the same problem.
So we can't take tree dedication money and put them in a park?
Um, I would s- you can do what I.
We can, but it may be cost prohibitive to do so.
Okay.
And it may deter the thing that we're looking to do anyways, as we're trying to keep the river view, and then you put the two trees right across the street.
I'm saying, I'm saying on the, in the park across the street, not right across the street, just to be clear.
I agree.
You tend to, those two trees is provide shade in the backyard.
Yeah, yeah. But I think with the utili- I don't think it makes sense to plant a shade tree over the top of a utility line either.
You could change the type of tree that you're looking for to some sort of ornamental tree or something.
Okay, so then I'd, I'd motion for the trees, on top of my other motion, that we just have, um, larger than shrubs, smaller than shade trees, probably six foot tall arbivites along the, uh, where the shrubs were going to go, in place of that. Um, that run the length of the building wherever there are not windows to block. I guess that would be, would you be okay with that as an alternative?
So just to make sure I'm following, so.
No shade trees, where the shrubs are, we put arbivites, like something six foot tall, along the east side of the property.
Along the riverside.
No.
No, this is along the side street.
There are a lot of windows there. It's my concern. I'm not opposed to arbivites. I love arbivites. I just, uh, I, I very much want it to work. And I'd say I want shade to be where the cars are, if I, if I can get it to work. I mean,
Yeah.
This is the challenges of having a compact site. So, um, I, I'm hesitant to commit to arbivites. I just have to look at it, where the window placements are, et cetera. At the same time, I, I want to allow for enough space between the building and, uh, roots and things like that, but um, I a hundred percent commit to getting something good. I just don't know what that is going to look like at this.
So what would you propose as a solution? Your, what do you want to do in your property then? That's defined and not, not pie in the sky. I'll do the best I can.
I would say leave the, the requirements for the, the count there, but grant me the flexibility for the placement of where they would be. So tho- those will be there. I just don't know where they're going to be, because it's dependent upon the utility placement.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that. That works perfect for me.
So we're going to leave the number at four?
Yeah.
Well, and then there's thirty-six shrubs.
Thirty-six shrubs, yeah.
It's.
So we'll leave.
Four trees.
Leave the number.
Thirty-six shrubs.
Leave the number, but leave the placement up to you. You good with that? Everyone else good with that?
I'm good with that.
So the second paragraph, well, the first line, the second paragraph, at least one overstory tree shall be planted in each parking lot island would be deleted.
That's deleted.
Correct.
Okay.
It would be ideal if we can make it work, but there's other restrictions to the site, and I'm willing to forego for that.
If it works, they can always.
It only behooves them and their renters, which I'm assuming you're going to, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm assuming you're.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's only behooves them to have shade parking outside, so I would guess they'd want that if they could.
And then I would also submit, uh, not just deleting the first line, but deleting the entire paragraph, because it deals with the shrubs, too. So having thirty-six shrubs in the front or the back m- might work, but I, I would, my recommendation would be, again, thirty-six, not a problem, but let me have the flexibility of it's the side, the front, where, where it's going to be.
I'm okay with that, but I want you to record saying you're not just going to plant a corner of shrubs with thirty-six small shrubs in it.
That's correct.
Perfect. Good, then we're good.
Let's say maybe the river's done, he'd work with staff and replacement then, so.
You seconded it, right?
I seconded it.
Perfect. So we have.
It's deleting the entire paragraph.
Yeah.
We'll delete the paragraph, and we'll just.
We'll keep the number, and we'll let you just choose where.
So I would recommend to the mayor and council that we would, delete that whole paragraph, and we would say, applicant will work with, work, work with city staff on placement.
Good with that.
That would be credible.
Perfect.
All right, so again, this is for preliminary plat, the motion.
Preliminary and final.
It's both, yeah.
Yep.
Well.
Or you're going to do all, and them all separate? We can all separate. That's fine.
Doesn't matter to me.
I'm fine motioning all three of them.
Unless we want to do three votes, I'm fine. I mean, I mean, it's going to change, wasn't there also the site plan?
That's.
Preliminary, final, and site plan.
Resolution, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, everybody clear on what the motion is, and that was?
And thank you, David, for your input.
Right.
Scott.
Yeah, the sprinkler thing made, makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
It does. I still have comments on that, though.
What?
As far as like sprinkling, like, as, if I may.
Go ahead.
I, I, I guess I would, uh, would have to agree with the comments made from planning, that if, if it is a fire issue, that we should do something, and I agree with, with Chief Kevin, that we should do something, because understanding the system that's down there and the redundancy in it, like, there's not a lot there, and fire equals time, and if I don't have that time to protect it, um, it's, it's, it's going to go anyway, so there's, there's nothing there to protect them. I have a thousand gallons of water in, in the well system, and if I have multiple heads popping off, because, you know, there's a big fire in there, I don't have that redundancy to build into my trucks that I can pull from those hydrants, so I'm supplying, trying to supply water. I don't have that time. What does buy me time is the hardy board and the FR rated sheathing behind it. So that's, I just would land on that, that in order for us to build redundancy into our already tapped out systems, that that would be a smarter idea, just me.
I agree with you.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't, I would encourage you to consider it for the safety of not only people that live there, but the firefighters have to come in case that happens, and the community around you.
Yeah.
But I think, I don't think we, based on the fact that there's the fire retardant underneath there and the sprinkler system, I don't think we need to mandate it in this particular case, but I don't disagree with what you're saying.
But I just, you know, again, yeah.
Yep.
I, Mr. Mayor. I, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I absolutely appreciate that. And we haven't ruled it out. It's if we can get the numbers to work, yeah, safety is is a huge concern. And if we can get it to work, absolutely. So it'd be a triple.
I'm just trying not to create any more gaps anywhere else in the system, just, you know, if I can minimize something just by simply changing one side or two sides of two buildings to meet some more needs, like, it makes more sense to me than rather just let it fly, so. Appreciate that.
Any more discussion? So we got a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify, so the motion is to approve both the ordinance amendment for the rezoning preliminary, final plat and site plan, removing the second paragraph and item two. So it's still requiring four trees and thirty-six shrubs. No requirement for location.
That's approval person working with city staff, yeah. And then also allowing the right of way at no cost to city.
Well, I'd say there.
Yeah, I mean, that's not.
I just want to make sure real quick.
And then allowing vinyl, which is not currently the code, but yeah, below by code, but is being allowed in this.
I guess. I would prefer they be split, so I could make, you know, actionable votes on all three versus just.
Well, we have two, we can we can break them up.
Yeah.
We can break them off, that's fine.
Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add, is there a requirement then for a reduction of the length? Does that also need to be specified? The length of the building.
We're okay with sixty-six feet.
No, so I mean, essentially what what, uh.
I think that's written in the resolution.
Yes, I don't see where it is, but it, yeah, item number four. The building footprint is acceptable.
Eighty-eight minus fourteen.
It'd be eighty-five feet minus the foot, the asshole could be fronted because it would take away the ten feet of.
Oh, okay, because of that, you're saying it's still, the math works?
Yes.
Got it, okay. Got it.
I'll shake them.
Clear as night.
Quick math.
You want to separate these out?
Okay.
So this 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 motion is just on then the resolution ten ten twenty twenty-four preliminary preliminary final plat and site plan. Are we good with that?
Yeah.
So given those amendments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. So Travis, did you want these broken out?
Yes.
So they're broken out.
Okay.
So you're saying no, no?
Yeah.
Okay, so then it's three to one on that one?
Well, we could, okay, that was my question. We could have motioned them broken out, right?
Okay.
It is broken out. Okay, so then we have another ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh six. And a motion and a second on that, so that's the rezoning.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries four to zero. All right. Thank you.
That's it.
We're good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff. I sincerely appreciate the feedback. We look forward to continuing to work with this body of city staff, residents of the community, again, make this the most successful. Because we do understand that this is going to set the tone, I think. The comment was, somebody made the comment in the EDA meeting a couple of days ago. And it sets the tone for for the future. And we want it to be as successful as possible for everybody. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item I, Ziegler.
Thank you. This is approval of resolution eleven dash twenty-four preliminary final plat for Ziegler Dayton addition, as well as an amendment to conditional use permit for open rental lots. The property is located at one eight one five one Territorial Road and one eight one seven one Territorial. This project has been to the council a few times. So the west property is Ziegler Rental Equipment. So they rent out pretty nominally construction equipment. The east property is Ziegler Truck Sales. So we are a showroom for electric trucks. What the applicant would like to do is to combine these two properties into one and to amend the conditional use permit to allow outdoor storage for the rental business on either, I'm going to call it either property because now there'll be just one property. So it'll allow more efficient use of the space for their business. When this went to the planning commission, there was a discussion of requiring screening along the back portion of the Ziegler Truck Sales. Kind of the, as this photo shows, is that there's a lot of visibility from Dayton Parkway. The planning commission did recommend approval with the projects, but did request that there be a, or suggest that there be an outdoor display area in the corner as well as trees that are planted to be kind of in between the the display area and trying to hide the outdoor storage area behind the building here. Since the planning commission meeting, the applicant did submit a revised landscaping plan. This area would be the the, I call it the outdoor, I don't want to call it the outdoor showroom, but some essentially someplace to park a nice shiny vehicle. And then there would be planted arborvitae, is two rows of arborvitae in between a fence line and the outdoor shade, outdoor storage area. And I believe the applicant is online on Zoom.
Possibly.
Uh, wait.
Does anybody have any questions for staff?
There we go.
Nothing? Questions for staff?
Not for staff, no.
Um, questions, I just have an applicant. Yeah, I just have an overall, I guess, would say concern. I I think overall, I don't have a problem with this. My concern comes as when we approve the property to the east, it was made clear that these properties would be run independent and that they wouldn't have storage from the property in the west, the property in the east, and property in the east would be electronic vehicle sale, electric vehicle sales, and probably on the right, and the the west would be the current stuff and that they wouldn't have that flow over. My understanding is now is they're going to use the property on the east to store stuff in the property on the west, correct? And so I just, we approved that knowing that, and that that was part of my decision to approve it. And so I don't know if this was the ultimate end goal of Ziegler. I don't want to think that that's the case, but it kind of feels that way from the outside of like, we'll just step this into exactly what we want, which is we want to do this, but we know we won't get it approved all at once, so we'll do it one step at a time and get it done. And that that, I don't think it was done in sincerely, but it, just so the applicant knows, it comes off, to me personally, it comes off a bit that way. And I have a problem with that. And so I think the designs look nice. I'm excited that, you know, both the buildings are there and they're a great part of the community. But I am not a fan of of us having approved the previous property, the east, knowing that we didn't want this exact thing to happen. So I will be voting no on this, but that'd be more my comment. Dave, do you have anything you want to add?
Well, no, I would just echo what you were saying. It it feels odd to me that it was such a short time ago that we approved this CUP with limited to no outside display area, and now it's kind of all all that. And it and it doesn't, you know, I I'm certainly supportive of Ziegler and want them to succeed and, you know, so I don't, I don't think I would vote no on this, but but I don't like this. And, you know, this as an amendment, and I don't know the, you know, the technicalities of it. It almost feels to me like it should be a new CUP and not an amendment to one we just passed.
Definitely. Well, we try to get them on. Does anybody else have anything?
I guess I would echo what what Matt and David are saying too, is that it does feel like it was such a short time ago that we gave them, you know, the ability to do this on the, we call it the east-west property, but now they're asking for it on the east property. It does feel a little bit bait and switch.
I'm Terry Draper. I'm with Ziegler Caterpillar, nine oh one West Ninety-fourth Street, Bloomington. And and I've been at all of your meetings here, and you're right, we were there asking to turn this into our electric truck sales place, and we did. And in the meantime, I mean, it's actually a good problem to have. And you, if you've driven by there, you probably see it. We have the Dayton rental property or rental store for us has done just a tremendous business, a tremendous business for us. And and we're not looking to run that business out of that other location. We're just asking that we can, we'll be able to store that that building, the old Gear Ties building there, the front half of it, the north half is our truck showroom and our and our truck sales department and stuff like that. The back half of that building is empty. We have not used it for anything. We have, it's like, again, like I say, if you drive by there, you see our yard is quite heavy with equipment. And and because we're having such terrible time with lead times getting lift equipment, which is our big thing, we we buy it by the truckload and we need a place to put it. We're actually just, we want to get it inside that building. It's not that we're going to fill that backyard up with with equipment or, you know, it, I know that I get hung up on this term, storage, right? We're not a, we're not a city cargo storage yard, right? This is, this is, in our mind, this isn't storage. This is our yard. This is what people see. We're going to fence this place off. It's going to be kept separate from the front truck entrance of it. There will be a fence across the back of that building tying into the existing Dayton rental facility. The trees will be in the back there to, for, you know, blocking the view or whatever folks want. And, yeah, that's, we're not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. We're growing and we need room. And we actually looked at purchasing the land to the west of us. One of the fellows wanted to sell, the other one didn't. That deal kind of fell through. So, yeah, we're kind of asking to get this rezoned so we can at least put our equipment in that building back there. And, yeah, maybe some larger stuff parked out back that honestly, it's not going to be that much. Because that's still, first and foremost, is our electric truck place up front, which hasn't looked like it's done very much. Because if you follow the news, you probably see the electric truck we picked had some trouble. They started, I don't know, starting on fire all by themselves or something. Our entire inventory went back to the dealership. We haven't got her to the manufacturer. Supposedly, it's on its way back from from Texas up to Minnesota here again, and we're going to try it again. So that's, if that, if that helps alleviate anybody's concerns, or at least, you know, where we're at.
I don't really have an issue with it.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with it. I I, to me, you know, the planning commission wanted more screening. My guess is, and it sounds like they they, things have changed a little bit where they need that, but.
So why is it an amendment and not just an additional CUP done on this property then?
It's easier.
It's just easier.
I mean, it ends up.
It's the easy team result.
The alternative would be to revoke the original conditional use permit and then adopt a new conditional use permit. So it'd be two different actions.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Scott. And I will second it. Need more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no.
No.
Motion carries three to one. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item J, this, yeah, item J. Very confusing to me.
Item J, or the next, the last one?
I'm J.
Item J.
Uh, so this is approval of resolution thirteen twenty-four to deny a conditional use permit for driven auto sales at one eight zero seven eight Territorial Road. So this is right across the street from Ziegler. This is an existing business that's been there since two thousand eight as an auto repair business. So the applicant purchases salvaged vehicles, repairs them at this location, or purchases them through a third party, repairs them at this location, sells it through a different third party at a dealership else outside of Dayton. What the applicant is is wanting to do is to obtain a state Minnesota dealership license so that he can buy his own vehicles, fix them on site, but still intends to sell them offsite outside of Dayton. With a conditional use permit, the way it fits, it's still, it's a conditional use permit for auto sales. Whether he intends to sell vehicles on site or not, he would be allowed to do that. When this went to planning commission, the commission had some concerns about the amount of outdoor storage of vehicles. This property has three different tenants, so it's a Drake Construction, there's direct auto sales, and then then your your business, driven. The property, the building, oh, yeah, the property has a conditional use permit from nineteen ninety-three. I believe the west prop, one of the tenants was for carpet sales, another one, I believe, was for auto repair. They both allow outdoor stores behind the building. So if the concern is the amount of outdoor storage, that that is already allowed within that fenced area. So the applicant was not attend, not able to attend the planning commission meeting due to medical emergencies. I wanted to make sure he had an opportunity to address any questions that the council would have. So once again, the planning commission's recommendation, as well as the EDA's recommendation, was to, is to deny the CUP.
Can you state your name and address? Address?
Number one eight zero seven eight Territorial, that's the business address.
So right off the bat, the the staff recommended approval of the denial?
Correct.
Okay. And I didn't see any, so was that findings based on the planning commission and EDA's recommendations?
Yes.
Okay. So. So the CUP, there's already a car sales on on the property, right?
Yeah, there is next door to me.
So how is?
How did it get there?
No, no, history probably brought that in, right?
Okay.
Right. We don't know.
I I don't know. I I know, I I don't know how long. I believe it's, if memory is correct, it's been licensed by the state since twenty twelve, if I remember correctly. When, if I remember correctly, so every every so many years, the dealerships have to renew their license and it requires a sign off by the city. We did sign off on that. I don't remember what year it was, but it wasn't too long ago.
So the CUP ties to the property.
Correct.
It's already auto sales on the property. So how does this, how does?
What does the CUP fix?
Why is it not IUP? This is my question.
Well, I'm not, I'm not too worried about that. I guess my concern is, is that we're basically, so this CUP would allow how many sales?
The sales are not.
The sales, I mean, I don't do sales. I sub that out. I just need a license, basically, because the state has different rules now to buy used cars and inspect them. It has to be under my name to pass inspection. I cannot go through a third party to do so.
Right, but the CUP is for sales.
Correct.
So if there's already sales on the property, how, does this CUP limit those sales?
So the the CUP that's existing is is specific to the middle tenant, not necessarily the third.
This is where I get confused. The CUP is tied to the property. So everybody there could die tomorrow. Somebody else could come in and that CUP still applies. So walk me through how this makes any sense.
Okay, the CUP from whenever it was, or the existing car dealership is tied to a specific address, which is not the applicant's. So that's the, so that, remember, this building has three different tenants.
They have three different addresses?
Three different addresses.
Okay, but it's tied to the property, right? Not the address.
It is tied to the property. It's basically one property.
A CUP is tied to the property ID. That's my understanding.
There's only one PID.
I do have a permission from the owner, the Drake Construction.
Yep, I get all that, but I'm trying to figure out technically why this isn't, why this is.
We already have a CUP in the property to allow this to happen.
I don't understand what we're doing.
Sure.
So the CUP is for the property ID that is the whole property, all three tenants. Anybody else who takes it over tomorrow?
Yeah, so I'm trying to think of if, you know, let's say there were ten different tenants.
Yep.
You know, we, and, you know, forget about the car dealership. So if there's a, you know, CUP, IUP for a specific use at a specific tenant, you know, we would tie it to however you would want the council would like to tie it to, whether it's an address or a specific portion of the property. You know, it doesn't have to be the entire property.
I bet by definition, CUPs were tied to a property.
Yes.
Correct, continue.
Yeah.
Mayor members of the council, typically it's tied to the legal description, not the PID. The PID is not typically the, the official description of the property, so.
The legal description of the property.
Correct. So if there's one parcel with one legal description, unless the, the approved CUP says that portion of whatever the legal description is, it would apply to the whole property. So not having seen the existing CUP, it's hard to say that it applies to only a portion of the property. So it's, the safest assumption is that it applies to the entire parcel.
Well, it's a new CUP.
No, she's saying the existing.
The one that exists there already that you were asking questions about.
I couldn't care less about the existing CUP. I, I don't want to muddy the waters with that. But we're going to approve a CUP for this whole property.
Or we can do it for just a portion of the property, which you're saying, correct?
If you ha- if you have a legal description
Yeah.
of the area that you want to limit the conditional use to, technically you can do that. It's not usually the cleanest way to do things.
Now, how do you record that? How would you record that?
It's recorded against the entire parcel, but because of the legal descriptions, you would have the legal description of the whole parcel and then carve out the part that the CUP would apply to. It's not standard, but it, it is technically possible.
Okay.
So i- i- if your question was about why do you need a new CUP when there's already a CUP on the parcel? For this, for this type of use?
No, my question was, is why couldn't anybody on the property use the CUP and anybody in future use the CUP?
The one that you're approving tonight?
Right.
Or asking, the one you're considering tonight?
Yes. So let's say you approved it for the, the, the east half, Easter. And tomorrow, the dealership decided.
Going to rent the Easter?
They're going to rent the Easter. Still there, right?
Right.
So, okay.
It runs with the land, just like you say.
The, the, and then so then it gets into what's, what's, so what would be the downside of this CUP? Does it, does it, you were saying that, um, somebody could just at that point start selling cars there?
Yes.
Um, and there's no, other than predicting what, what the state says, um, does the CUP limit the number?
Yeah, so if, if the, let's, let's say if the council wants to take care of the applicant and what, what he's doing is you're okay with, but you're not necessarily okay with what the next owner might do, or the next tenant.
Yeah.
You know, and I guess my suggestion, the state requires for a, a car license, you have to have a minimum of five parking stalls.
Right.
Um, you can approve the CUP of five parking stalls. That's going to prevent someone from coming in and turning the whole property into a car lot. But you can also have no limitations and that would allow a future tenant to use the whole property as a auto, for auto sales.
Is there a way to make this an IUP?
Um, no.
And that's because of the state?
Uh, no, that's because the city code allows it as a conditional use permit, not, not an interim.
Oh.
So you, you would have to amend the city code.
That's because, alright.
I would rather have it be an IUP, amend the city code, but then it allows us the control, if you will, over it in the future, not having it turn something off.
I remember, I think this came up at the, and I remember there was a reason, I just didn't remember what it was. So how would this CUP change what's going on there today?
Um, it wouldn't. It would still look the same.
It would still look the same, still operate the same, except he'd get to keep more money for his training.
Yep.
What's the, what's the worst that could happen? That somebody starts selling cars out of that lot?
I don't think, uh, Grand, Drake Construction will allow that because he's pretty strict on his rules.
Yeah.
And the guys that.
Their concern is if he sells the property to someone else and that isn't strict on the rules, what's the worst that could happen?
I got it.
It's a good point, but yeah. I think the worst would be in, in auto sales.
You have another auto sales lot.
Yeah. It's right next to Desa.
And so he's already, it's next to Desa and he's already, the, the, the east or the west lot is already selling cars.
Yes, middle parcel, yeah, or middle tenant.
And you're going to sell cars under the name of driven auto sales or driven auto?
Driven auto sales, but, uh, I'm not planning to sell much.
Are you selling cars today?
No.
So if I Google it, I won't find reviews of your car sales?
I do have cars on the lots.
Okay.
I do have six cars sitting pretty much in my parking spots.
Okay.
And I don't have none of them for sale pretty much because it's just, uh, it's like a work in progress. I'll park it out there for the car that I have to fix something. So I use the parks, park, parking space up front.
So I was at the planning commission meeting and I watched the EDA meeting and it seemed like the focus was on things that didn't seem to have to do with the CUP. I know the EDA was concerned about, um, pollutants.
Yep.
Um, the, at the planning commission was concerned about all the cars in the backyard, which is apparently being handled via another CUP and that CUP is still being complied with?
Yeah, so the, the nineteen ninety-three conditional use permit limited storage within a fenced area. And, and you can kind of see it on the aerial photograph where the fence is, so.
The yellow is behind, that's where the storage for us.
This is, this is the applicant's area. This is the middle tenant that is, um,
Yep.
direct auto sales.
Yeah, like those cars up front, basically, that's what I was telling. Uh, they do sit up front. The cars always are up front on a spot. Uh, it's just kind of a project.
I only ask, I only ask a question because I was using Google Maps to view the area and look around and see what's around it, just for my own reference. And there's a pin there that says there's an operational business there today under the name of Driven Auto, including two Google reviews, which to me tells me that there's already sales going on under the name of Driven Auto.
I don't have a permission to sell cars, so.
I understand. I understand no permission for it. I'm not arguing that piece of a bit. I'm saying based upon what I see, just by, I happen to come across, if you, because it shows pins.
The driven auto sales.
I know, that's why I asked the question. I trust him. I, I have to trust. I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, that's why I asked the question.
Driven auto sales been there for ten years.
Okay.
It's, it's just the name of the business that, uh, it's been there. And I was at the shop since two thousand eight.
Okay.
So.
Perfect, that helps. Thank you.
Everything else is in compliance with?
It, it is. I mean, there, there is some concern, you know, so both of these businesses deal with, uh, salvaged vehicles. There's a concern that, you know, when you, you know, these cars have been in traumatic accidents.
Yeah.
Are they leaking fluids? I don't know. So, um, the staff's intent, once the snow is gone, is to go out there and do an inspection. We would do that whether there's a CUP there or not.
But this CUP, even if we don't prove the CUP, it's not going to change the fact those vehicles are coming in today. It's not, only that's going to change is how much money he gets to put in his pocket at the end of the day. If we deny this, we're basically taking margin out of his pocket because.
I'm having a time.
Uh, so I think, I think, I, so to be clear, I came in with a different approach to this. I appreciate the conversation. Um, I may have been swung to saying this may be okay. I do like the idea of putting a maximum number of parking spots so we can limit, we don't have seventy-five cars for sale out front, not that they'd fit, but you know what I mean?
Yep.
To have five parking spots. I'm okay if, I think if we did that in some way to limit the amount of vehicles that would be up for sale. I don't know. That's why I'm, I, just because I feel like if we do nothing, it's not going to change anything. I don't like, candidly, I don't like the way it is now, but
Yeah.
of denying this isn't going to change that. It's not going to drive anything forward. It's just going to hurt this gentleman. And that doesn't seem, it seems like government getting in the way, not government helping, in my opinion. That's.
That's my.
Yeah. So I don't know.
We definitely got to, to address the contaminant thing though.
I agree a hundred percent.
Because I don't believe for a second that these cars are, don't have fluids in them.
But the CUP doesn't, has nothing to do with that. It's, from what I can see.
Does the CUP require that there, that, when we approve this CUP, will it require that there's no environmental contaminants leaking into soil because of it, as part of the CUP?
Not as part of it, but I, I'm just.
Can we add that as part of it?
We can add it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then that would stop.
So I would, I would suggest as a real, because I share that concern around, around hazardous waste. And Hennepin County does the hazardous waste enforcement in Hennepin County, and that's who you have to get your license from. So I don't know how we weave that into the language here, but it, we should say something to the effect that, um, if, whatever level of hazardous waste license is required for this business, that we, we get some confirmation that that's in place and they're complying with it.
Dave, are you out on the deck or on a terrace or something?
Yeah, I, I wish I could turn my camera on and share my view.
I know. No, thanks, just I've been there.
He's got birds where we got snow.
All right.
But I, I've kind of changed my feeling around this too. I know I shared some concerns at the EDA meeting. You know, around what happens to this business, business and to a future tenant or owner, you know, what does that look like then? Um, and I would have rather had it be an IUP, but it doesn't sound like we have that option. And, um, so I think with the limitations of the site, I, you know, I think it's, it's probably okay, but I would want to ensure that, you know, the, the rules that Hennepin County enforces, that those are being complied with. And that would include having the appropriate hazardous waste generator license, which would probably be small quantity in this case. But whatever it is that, that we should en- ensure that that, that's happening and that, um, that that's done. Hennepin County does the, um, does the hazardous waste visits, you know, they do unannounced visits at businesses like this. And, uh, you know, and, and they're, they're, they don't fool around. I went through that with the hospitals. When they come to see you, that's not a good day usually.
Right.
So you better, you better make sure you've got all your records, uh, that you can, you know, what you collected by quantity and what you did with it after, you know, that it didn't go in a barrel into the river or something. That you need to have kind of that cradle to grave sort of, uh, trail on all hazardous waste. And I would want to make sure that that's happening.
So I think unless there's more, thank you, David, that's helpful. Unless there's more conversation, I'd like to motion a denial of the denial. Correct? Is that the correct way to approve it? Or just amend the resolution? Okay.
Yeah, so I, I guess I would suggest it's a recommendation to approve the conditional use permit and we'll change the conditions.
Yes. Okay, so I'd like to do that with the caveat that all, uh, Hennepin County hazardous waste material handling are fulfilled per county regulations.
We have our own, I mean, Kevin, you can go in and inspect this place too, right? Which I, we absolutely should.
I agree.
That's, that's part of the inspection program that we'll work on currently is to, at some point, get through all the businesses in Dayton. Um, and then from that point.
Continue probably by yearly, uh, inspections after that.
That's what we had every year pretty much, uh, uh, one of the guys come in and inspect the shop for the light, uh, ignition, fire ignition. And everything else.
I just want to say thank you for the conversation.
And we do have a oil truck stop by every like three, six months to pick up the oils. We have like a oil jugs that, we have oil to, uh, put away. We have a truck to come and pick it up, so.
Okay.
Did your motion include limiting it to five?
Oh, and limiting to five parking spots?
Specific to vehicles that are for sale.
Correct. Yes, sir. Thank you for that. That'd be my motion.
All right, I need a second. I'll second it.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarity, so on the resolution, what this changes, this is a motion for approval.
Yep.
Um, under the findings, this changes item number six and number seven, where that number six, where it says the proposed use is not adequately screened, um, we're striking the word not, that the proposed lot use is adequately screened. And then on item seven, where it says the proposed use will create a nuisance, including but not limited to odor, noise, vibration, visual pollution, we're striking the word will. So the proposed use will not create. Here we go.
Uh, talking about screening, I thought there was just some ridiculous amount of trees required or.
Yeah, there were.
Yeah, so if this were, so this would be an example, if this were a new project from scratch, this is the number of trees and shrubs that would be required.
Yeah, we are not, yeah, we are not looking to do that, but this would be if it was.
All right.
Just to let you.
So, so this six hundred and seventy-nine shrubs is not happening?
No.
No.
Yeah, there's no landscape.
That whole paragraph doesn't even need to be.
As part of the resolution.
Just more of it, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Doesn't change my motion. Does it change your second?
No.
Okay, then we're good.
Okay.
Appreciate the clarity.
Were you, were you clear then on, okay, so we got a motion and a second? Need more discussion? All those may ever say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm okay with it.
Um, all those opposed say no?
Well, if it comes back, if Hennepin County gets on you, it's over.
There's a lot of people that we don't, I still have to go to the state and everybody else.
All right, so we're three to one to approve the CUP.
Good to go.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, this probably should have been discussed, but do we want, um, to limit the property description or are we just, just slap down the property?
Slap down the property.
Do we limit that load? We'll make one box for it.
Is there anything on that matter that protects us? Because like I look at this overview and I, like, there's a crap ton of stuff sitting back there.
There is, and that's why I was asking about.
And I'm worried about having ourselves the same thing, Mon- not Monticello, Big Lake or whatever.
Becker?
Yeah, the Becker fire incident, something like that. Like there's, I could see a deep rooted fire in one of those back cars. And there's no access to any of that stuff until the fire reaches you.
I don't, just, I, I don't think this guy is going to cause that. I think that's why I was asking about the rest of it. Because it's a, well, it's looks.
I think we can address that in the fire inspection.
We'll address that.
So that's what I'm wondering is, is, could that be addressed separately?
Yeah.
Mayor, members of the council, um, that would be addressed in an actual fire inspection. So go out, do an inspection, not of just this tenant, but the other three tenants on the same property. Uh, making sure obviously we have proper fire lane egress into those, into those areas. Uh, we do have hydrants on territorial, but getting as far back as you see almost the railroad tracks with that excess of, uh, cars and whatever may be back there. Uh, that is part of the inspection is for us to go out, you know, actually take, um, photos of what is actually there, document that, and then that way we can be prepared if we have to respond to that scene at a later date.
Okay.
Sometime around in June, right?
We're, we're going as fast as we can.
All right, item K. Quick trip.
Yep, this is a concept plan review for a quick trip off of, uh, Interstate ninety-four and Dayton Parkway. The address will be on Maple Court. So, um, the last three projects have all been in the same neighborhood. So this was, uh, last brought to the council in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two for, I believe it was a concept, and I can't remember if it was also preliminary plant rezoning.
I think the whole process.
It came pretty far. Um, what the applicant is, so once again, this, the project that's being presented to the council tonight is the same of, as what was presented in twenty twenty-one. It, it's a convenience store with a truck, uh, park, overnight truck parking as a component to it. So again, as a, this property has been vacant for, you know, the, was it twenty eighteen that the interchange was completed? Um, the council had recommended or had denied the project back in twenty, I believe it was January twenty twenty-two. Uh, it was a split vote. Some of the concerns that the council had was, um, that this property primarily benefited the motoring public on I ninety-four. Um, it would increase the, the, uh, the amount of emergency services, which is paid by Dayton taxpayers, not necessarily the motorists on ninety-four. Um, there's also the several comments that there was a higher and better use for this property than a convenience store or gas station convenience store. Uh, since twenty twenty-one, um, it's still vacant. Uh, from the property owner, I'm told that there's been interest in an asphalt plant as well as some type of industrial development with outdoor storage. Uh, so the overall question for the council is what is the highest best use for this property? Uh, would a, a gas station convenience store fit this? You know, what the applicant needs to know is kind of a flat yes or no, whether or not to pursue to the next step, which is preliminary plant.
Anybody want to jump in? Dave?
Sure, I can, I, I guess I can start.
Yeah.
So this is the, you know, this is the same project being presented actually with the same documentation that, and which includes saying that this is a preliminary plat approval, um, which I know it's not, but it shouldn't say that. Uh, but all of it, I think, just got pulled out and, and put back in the packet. And my concerns, as they were before, was that. And my concerns, as they were before, was that, um, that there is, there was a vision for higher use of this property. That was why the city of Dayton invested as much as it did into that interchange and all of the landscaping that went with it. Uh, you know, I, I continue to want to honor that, that was, that there was a better use for this area than that. I have no doubt it would be, uh, very successful as a truck stop. We, we kind of ensured that by the, by the amount of money we put into that exit. Um, but it's, nothing has changed for me. It's still being marketed as a truck stop. If you look at any of the, all of the signs around that property, it still says potential truck stop. So I don't know, you know, what level of effort has gone into, into marketing this property for another use, but that's not my, that's not my deal. Um, nothing has really changed for me, and so my vote would still be no. If you need a suggestion of another area of Dayton to put a Quick Trip on, I, I've got some very, very definite ideas on that.
I think I heard already.
From everyone, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, I think Quick Trip's a great company and, and, uh, so please don't take this personally. I just don't think this is, this is what we were looking for for that part of town.
I personally don't have an issue with this, other than the, the amount of truck spaces I would limit to 15 to 18, somewhere in that area, similar to the one over on Inonsego there. Um, Quick Trip, they run a very clean shop. Uh, I think this location for this thing next to the industrial area is, it fits in perfect. All those industrial users are gonna, are gonna be stopping here for sure. Um, I don't see a problem with it. I mean, we've been waiting for the, uh, the king to come for, with a better presentation for a couple of years and it hasn't happened, so.
Why would you limit the trucks?
It just, it, it's less congested than.
I think it'd drive more congestion than you'd have more people parking around the streets and stuff at that point. That was my concern when we talked about the first time was like when we limited it, but that we just end up filling the streets up. So I still have a feeling that that still might be an issue, but, um, again, I agree with Scott, though. I think this is, this is a good spot. It serves the e-commerce of that area very well. Um, to the point that it doesn't serve the residents of Dayton. Well, you can make the same argument for the truck stop Rogers.
Yeah.
And I, I don't, I don't buy it. So, um, again, I, I have no problem with this, other than the fact that I think you should have more beautification around the, the pumps and stuff like that, since we are calling it the, the gem or the, whatever you want to call it.
Gateway to Dayton.
Gateway to Dayton. It should have some of those beautification factors, especially around just like the, uh, the, um, not maybe the diesel ones, but definitely around the consumer pumps and stuff like that or.
On the brick, the brick wrapped candy?
Yeah, yep, that kind of stuff.
That was an interesting conversation of planning commission.
I did. I watched that. And I was just like, I don't care if your door gets dinged, really. It's the beautification aspect of it.
I wasn't.
The door gets dinged, that's not Quick Trip's problem, so.
It's your fault.
Yeah. So, but I still think that those aesthetic pieces should be included in, in the, the next, uh, presentation, so.
So I was probably looked at as a swing vote last time, and I really had hoped it would be get another use here. Um, it sounds like, um, there's a couple of problems with the area. One being it's in the middle of, you know, there's sandstone just to the northeast. Arno, I, I don't know. I, I, I think I'm at the point now where I'm accepting.
Yeah, I have thoughts. I, I went back and looked at some of the major reasons that people, I was looked at before, one of which was not being the right place. I would echo that I think that it would be great to get something different here. I just don't think we're gonna get something different here, candidly. And I also don't think it's Quick Trip. I think Quick Trip has a very clean shop, great donuts, love donuts. But, um, I, I, so I think, I think this spot makes sense. I think it's normal next to an interstate to have a truck stop with a gas station right off the interstate. Um, so I have no problem with that. I think it makes sense. The one ask I would have for you to consider, and it won't change my vote, one or the other, is, um, it would be great if there was some electric vehicle charging here, both because we have an electric truck sale right down the road now. Um, but a lot of big companies from Pepsi, Walmart, FedEx, JB Hunt are all putting orders in for electric semis. So I think it's good to plan for that ahead of time. And as somebody who has traveled cross country in electric vehicle, it's nice to have them right off the interstate, stop in, get some good donuts, and sit around for a little while charger. So, um, if there's room for that, I think it'd be a great addition. And we don't have an electric vehicle charger in Dayton, so it would be a first. I think that'd be good as well. Um, I know the second piece was safety, and I did a bunch of research into that. Hasn't come up tonight, so I'm not overly worried about unless someone in the audience wants to talk about it. But I, I, yeah, we can dig into that if need to, but I'm not overly concerned about it. Um, I'm lucky enough to be related to somebody that, that specializes, um, that their job is to do with human trafficking issues and other things. Um, and so if you want ideas of how to help overall reduce that, I can give you a bunch of things. She works with other state agencies as well to help with that. I'm happy to share that with you, or just her contact. She'd be happy to contact with you as well. But if that is a concern, then, um, I think there's a lot of things in place that could help with that. Um, so I'm, I'm in favor. I think it's a good plan. I think there's opportunities for even more of this. That's where I'm at. I've said my piece. I'll motion that we approve this.
So as a concept plan, there's no formal.
No, hold on, there we go.
Feedback.
It's under action, so I just figured there was something there.
I think, I think we're happy being in the community with the current location we have. It's probably been, man, almost 18 months now. I think there's been a lot of positive feedback on that particular location, very busy all the time. So that served us extremely well for being, you know, only at, you know, 18 months in, 16 periods in, whatever it is. So I think the, the feedback we've gotten from that particular area is nothing but positive. I think we're, I, I think, I hope that we are perceived by you guys as a, as a benefit and a, to this community.
And you pay taxes, so we like.
Sure.
There was no car wash on this one, was there?
Uh, there's probably not one show on that plan, no.
Okay. So plan to put one in?
No.
Okay.
I think generally speaking, people.
As I say, I don't remember being part of the.
Get a car wash and get back on. It's kind of the deal.
There were showers proposed, though, wasn't there?
There are, there are places for showers proposed, yep.
Yep. And laundry, too, right?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's in the package, yeah.
Is there opposition to a car wash, if you wanted to put one in?
Probably not. I think we can look at, at adding one on the, attaching it to the back of the building. What's there space up there in that corner? I just haven't figured out how to get cars circulating around the backside of the building. We can look into it, absolutely. I don't think there's opposition. I just think they probably thought it's, it's not the best area for a car wash, but it's, because no rooftops got around.
Well, if Dayton Parkway now you connect to 117th.
Less than a mile of the road, too.
There are.
That then goes to a resident, like you, people are gonna be right past this to get to their homes.
I guess, yeah.
And there's gonna be four developments right there.
And we've already heard from them. Okay. And we will hear from them again.
Yes, we will.
So. And I, I guess in talking on highs and best use of property value, it's not like we're sucking up the entire, um, commercial node. You guys have the other side of the freeway that can kind of develop for some different types of users on that side. That's like, that both, both sides are still yours, or isn't it, Rod?
Yeah.
No, no. Both of those.
And then you're gonna help us in the north side town.
Yeah, I think so.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
Thanks, guys.
Item L.
It's 85 or plus.
I got you covered. I got you covered. Navy mayor and council, um, they have two projects tonight. Both should be familiar to you. Uh, the first one is what we've been calling the, the Jaeger Jordan Ditch, uh, project. It's located on River Road and I'll say north, central, or northwest part of the city. And shown on the right on the, the slide just shows the approximate location of the ravine that we're looking at. So just the quick background, and this is a repeat of the last presentation. So this ravine has been identified for having excessive erosion on it. Um, improvements are definitely warranted. Hennepin County did a project in 2023 that include the replacement of a ditch, or sorry, of a culvert under the roadway. With that project, they did stabilize the portion immediately downstream of the roadway, but they didn't continue it down to the Mississippi River. This project would extend that stabilization from their project closer to the river. So, uh, property owners on both sides of the ravine are certainly favorable, uh, for the project and, and actually requesting the project as well. So they're excited to see it. Um, we did secure grant money on this from Hennepin County for $32,000. In addition, uh, the watershed has allotted $50,000, which is the maximum for this type of project to go towards the improvements. And just to note, council did see this on January 9th and authorized the design at that time. So just a quick graphic of the, of the proposed improvements, uh, the project from the county, again, it was the short distance off of the roadway with this project carrying it down towards the Mississippi River. So this is the same funding breakdown that was shared at the previous meeting. We had an estimated project cost of $105,000. Um, those costs broken down as shown with the funding being the two sources that I mentioned, and then the balance being the responsibility of the city of Dayton. Uh, council direction at the last meeting was to limit the cost responsibility. So in effort to do so, um, what we're proposing, um, is to target the $85,000, as mentioned. Um, so we, we didn't necessarily alter the design or the bid itself, however, we did add a provision to control the scope after award without any adjustments to the unit prices. So what that means is if the bids come in, even at 70,000 or higher, we can say haul less rock onto the project and we'll just do the best we can with the rock that can be, the rock is 70% of the cost. So that's the, um, the biggest component of it. So we have the provisions in there to allow for that. So what we'll do is when we, when the bids come in, we'll see if we do have to reduce it, and then we'll also monitor the engineering costs and the other contingencies. And I will just note that both of those are, are not contingency, or the other costs and the contingency, sorry. Uh, both of those are tracking less than what was originally thought. I think the engineering were, were probably around at least $6,000 less than we expected to be at this time. And then the, the other costs, um, I'll verify with the city, but I expect them to be minimal. Um, so the, what that would do is lower the city's responsibility down to that $3,000 mark. That's what we'd be looking for. So with those, uh, conditions added, um, we recommend approval of the project and then authorization. Um, one other quick note on this, because of the cost threshold being less than $175,000, we have the ability to do direct solicitation for quotes. Um, we do recommend doing that. Um, it saves some money for publication, some timeline, and a little bit of effort. Um, and we can invite plenty of, of contractors to get bids to do the work, so.
Rock is pretty fixed.
Yeah, there, there shouldn't be a whole lot of variation between, it, probably the low bid will be a reflection of who has the ability to fit it. Their schedule would be my guess, so. And then just a, a note, the, the bids are due, shoot, April 16th, I believe. Um, so they'll be returned on the 23rd for, for council review. Um, so you'd have another opportunity to, um, either stop the project or continue at that time for construction.
I'll motion we go out for bids.
I'll second. Any more discussion?
Dave, anything you want to add?
No, I, I did have a question that Jason answered. I, I don't think that we knew for sure on the grants the last time we discussed it. And now it says they're secured, so that's good news to me. Or maybe I missed it, but at any rate, that's good news to me. Um, another question would be, I know I can't vote tonight, and I'll ask more about that at another time, but, um, this is, this is in my neighborhood, so would I need to abstain anyway?
How many you passed it from it?
Nope. Councilor for Shant, you have no, there's no benefit directly to you. It may be in your area, but it's not any direct benefit to you, and it's not a financial benefit to you either, so.
Thank you.
Personal decision.
Then I don't, that, I don't have any concerns about it.
Okay.
Can you see it from your balcony? Just kidding.
Not the one he's on.
Not this one.
Yeah, not that one.
Okay. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. Carries four to zero on item M.
Uh, so this is the 2024 Mill and Overlay project. Again, not any significant new info to share. Just a reminder of the project location. This includes 152nd Avenue, which is a dead end road off of Brockton Lane up in the northwest part of the city, as well as Thicket Lane North, which is west of another dead end road west of Longdale Avenue, uh, just south of 152nd, as shown. So just the background, the pavement on both of these streets has been noted as poor condition and warranting improvements. Uh, plans for the project were authorized in February. We opened, excuse me, we opened bids on March 19th. We did receive nine bids on the project, um, as noted, uh, in the council packets. They came in, I'll, I'll even say significantly less than anticipated. So there was a, there was a big reduction in bituminous pricing from what we were told to expect, um, this spring. So that was, that was good news. Um, and being bituminous is the, essentially the entire cost on a project like this. It, it makes a big difference. So, um, low bid was Omen Brothers for just over 108, 50,000, $158,000. Um, I think, yeah, I think we had like 200 and, over 200,000, 240,000 even on it. Um, so our recommendation is to work to Omen to proceed with that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So the three lowest bids are very close. And so the question, I mean, they're within three, three, four thousand dollars for each other. Do we have experiences, good or bad, with either of those three that would make us say, you know what, we've worked with Aztec corporate making this up before, and they did one of the best jobs I've ever seen, so maybe it's worth the extra two. I mean, I'm only asking because they're that close in price and we're on our budget. Is there a good reason for us to consider not going with Omen Brothers? I looked at where they're at. None of them are, like, they're all fairly low goal, like it's not.
No, I, well, I will say that we've had, our experiences have been fine with all of, all of the contractors on the list. Um, um, but actually by statute, we're required to go with a little bit.
Oh.
Um, through the public bidding process, as least, as long as they're demonstrated to be responsive.
Right.
Which they have been, and it, it's actually very, very difficult. I'm not suggesting we would want to with any of these companies, but it's very, very difficult to not go with the low bid.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve, but I got one comment here. And this might be another discussion for something else. Uh, Jason, and I know this is not you, and, and I'm not pointing right at you, but even on the last one, the engineering is way up. It's, it's 20% on this one, better than 20%, and 35% on the last one, even with your $6,000 deduction. Um, this would be, in my opinion, something, I mean, we spent a ton of money on engineering, and something that should be possibly looked at, this could be an easy in-house thing.
I actually asked this question to Zach a couple of meetings ago, is a meeting with you weekly. And the feedback I got, and I don't disagree, that was my question, like, we spent a lot of money on engineering costs, what if we brought it in-house? And basically we'd had to, you'd say four people we'd have to hire to fulfill.
Four?
Four, the different expertises that we get from going through STAN Tech. So at minimum, if not more, because that was my, so we just hire someone, they do all this, but it sounds like it's such a wide breadth of knowledge. Unless Zach, you want to add something where I missed, but I had the same exact thought you did a few weeks back.
Well, I'm just a dumb elk farmer, and I think Marty and I could figure out what to do on this project.
Just need the equipment, Marty.
So. Okay. That's my two cents. That's my two cents.
Did you get a second?
I need a second.
I'll second.
Oh, okay. That 30,000 isn't written in stone yet either, right? Or is it?
For the engineering?
Yeah.
Um, no, it, it never is.
It might come in cheaper than that.
Yeah, I don't know of any that have gone over, to be honest, but, um, yeah, it, it's, uh, it's, uh, per your contract, it's a.
Cause I think that it's simple to figure out what you need on this deal.
I wish it was that simple. I wish it was that simple.
It's kind of like buying hay. If you got 10 elk, you need this many bales. It's simple.
I think this might have a lot more than hay.
There's a little more math involved.
Dave, do you have any, uh, anything to say here?
Uh, no, I don't. While I, I share the concern about the engineering fees, but I've asked about that before, too. And, you know, I think it's something we continue to study. You know, at what point we do need to bring some engineering in-house. It doesn't sound like we're there yet, but I think that's, that's a fair ask. Um, no, my question around this is, is that, you know, I believe, maybe you haven't gotten to the next, the other one yet, but the, both of these projects are coming in well under budget. Is there anything else we, we should be looking at, uh, to use pavement management money on this year?
Um, yeah, I guess just on that note, I had a discussion today with some of our staff about moving some of the other, I'll say easier projects in, in upcoming years in the pavement management plan that was recently, um, accepted, um, up to this year. So basically doing a more extensive SealCo project. It's not big dollars, but for that reason, um, because there was money allotted for it, let's pull some of those forward and, and do them now while the, you know, maybe the bidding environment is favorable. Um, we actually could even look at. We actually could even look at doing additional similar projects to this if we want. The other thought is one of the, or two of the recommendations, one is Zachary Lane, which will take coordination with Champlin, which is probably too late to coordinate that for this year yet. And another one is South Diamond Lake Road, and we didn't know if that would be a good year to do that one with the work taking place with the county and north, sorry, and River Road, just as it might be as a detour. So we didn't want to make that any more difficult than it might already be. So, but we're looking at the easy ones, if you will, to pull forward.
All the way around your television. All right, thanks, Dave. Okay, so we had a motion to second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Prove four to zero. Item M.
Marty's turn.
He's the one that's the recent. Hour and three, you want to recess?
Do we think this is going to take 40 minutes?
It's gonna take a while.
This may take a while. Does anybody need a recess?
Yeah. I'll take a five minute.
Okay, we'll take a five minute recess.
We gotta just tone it down a little.
This item's gonna take 40 minutes or more, so I want to make sure everyone got a time to take a bathroom break.
Are we taking a break?
Yes.
So you want me to move this?
Huh? All right, am I ready? For this? It's crazy.
At that meeting, the neighborhood meeting, there's a lot of discussion about what the neighborhood wanted to see in there, and that was presented to the park commission for them to make their decisions from. At that meeting, the neighborhood meeting, there's a lot of discussion about what was required for playground, what kind of elements, what kind of age group, those kinds of things. Those were incorporated into that, and those have been passed on to a playground equipment company who are currently pulling a design together. They're pulling a design together now so we can apply for some grant funding through Helenpin County. That grant can be up to $50,000, which is what we've got for Hayden Hills Park. The numbers that we have in here don't incorporate any grant funding or anything like that. These are just raw numbers that Paul pulled together, and then I talked with Zach after the meeting to see whether there were other opportunities for funding this from. We did talk at the park commission about using some funding for trails coming out of the trail funding, which wasn't part of the initial discussion. When we started this project, we didn't, it was four different areas of property that weren't, you know, it was going to be pulled together to make a nearly 14 acre park. When it was put in the CIP, it was put in as two different projects, one for 2024, one for 2026. Since we did the master plan on Area 21, it was realized that most of the development was going to be in the north part of the project, where, you know, that's where the playground's going to be, that's where the pickleball's going to be, that's where all of those elements are going to be. So one of the things that we want to consider is moving some of that 2026 funding into the 2024 project. And I think while we have the plans out here, they're not set in, they're not set in stone at this this time, and there is still time for moving around, and I want to try and get some firm prices so we can make the decisions as to what to include and what not to include. So other than the staff report, which has got a lot of information in there, I pulled together some some slides to just see how the neighborhood park came through development. There were two initial concepts that were presented, incorporating a number of different elements, double pickleball, shelters, full basketball court, backstops, double tennis court, informal soccer. We got some feedback on these. These were presented to the park commission and to the neighborhood at the neighborhood meeting. The second concept was a little different, with the ball field in a different location, a community garden plot. There was some talk about a dog, a dog park as well, which both of those were, you know, not very well received, and there was discussion about double tennis courts or double pickleball, half basketball court or full basketball court. But those were the things that were discussed, and the food truck parking was another innovation on this park that some people liked and others didn't like. So those were the initial designs. From there, we trimmed them down. This is a resident feedback sheet. I don't know if you can read that very well. There was a lot of support for the full basketball court, older stuff for kids in playground, add sand volleyball, pickleball over tennis, combined pickleball and tennis. There was, you know, a little bit of support for that. Maximize playground space, preference of food truck parking had a good response. Dog park not desired, had a very strong response, no community garden, like I said. So these, all these comments, Paul took and, you know, revised the design again. Park commission meeting had some, this was how they came out with their priorities. It was basketball, full court with four goals, two pickleball, pickleball courts, a sand volleyball court, a ball field, and tennis courts were out on the fifth. These will be alternates to the baseball, the base bid items, which the base bid items will include the playground, landscaping, all the site work, grading, and all that kind of stuff.
And just to be clear, the park commission also mentioned that they were given the costs of the roundabout for the food truck, although it would be cool, they figured it made more sense to have ample parking there without the roundabout.
Correct.
It's not in this slide, but.
Yeah.
And that was based on feedback from the meeting and the people that have come multiple different meetings.
So I believe this is the last plan that Paul pulled together without the parking for the the food trucks. It shows the double pickleball court, the full basketball court, sand volleyball, phase one parking extended to 21 stalls. And then on the southern half, there was some discussion about, you know, what needs to go in there. And there's some native prairie mixes going in there. There was some discussion about how that would be developed there. They wanted a natural element in the park, so that area there, and it's got some nice trees in there, and the informal ball field. Now, there was some discussion about whether CDA A would like to use this park, and John did mention that CDA A would be interested in using this neighborhood park for practice, I believe, yeah?
Yeah.
Four games for, I'm gonna say between ages seven and nine and 10.
So.
There won't be games till 10:00 PM at night?
No.
Yeah.
And so that would be developed as, you know, the second part of this project. And then another feature that's a cheaper feature would be this golf course potentially on the, in between the prairie.
So, Marty, can you go back to that?
Sure.
So without the alternates, what's up there? Besides play area?
Yeah, your play area.
That's it.
Pretty much play area and trees, trails.
But the alternates gets it down to the budget?
Sorry?
Without the.
Yeah, that was the problem, because there wasn't much left to put much in there after you got, you know, the base bid.
So what is eating up that, I guess, I, one of the problems I have with is an information flood here. Processing all this stuff was a lot.
Yeah, I know, it's a lot. I was trying to trim it down as well to make it more digestible.
So just the the playground and the seating area, the estimate is 265,000.
That's an estimate. Now, remember, that these are all bids, these are all estimates, no different than Jason putting.
Hopefully estimates.
Are way high, like, they could be. I mean, I don't know, but again, try to make sure that we keep this in perspective as well. Sorry, mayor and council, we want to, the bids are our best guess for what we think it's going to cost. We don't, yeah, the estimates. We have no clue what actually is going to be bid on these items.
I get all that, but, I mean, to me, estimate should be within an order of magnitude.
You would think so, but if you look, we can just use the same example tonight with the Mill and Overlay project. We had guesstimated or estimated about $296,000 for that project, it came in at 158. I mean, we weren't even really, if you look at the cost, we weren't even close, we're a hundred grand off, I mean, that's significant dollars.
The problem is.
So they were told bituminous would go up in the debt.
Yeah, correct, yeah. And that's what I mean, so, and we're using our best guess and Paul's best guess.
These are extremely fat.
They might be, but they might not be, I don't know. I mean, that's kind of the idea, we don't have a clue.
Yeah.
The way to do it for alternates is, okay, we need this at least, and then we want to provide as much out of the alternates as possible that we can fit in the budget or that council's comfortable with doing.
I just, we, it just seems like when we go down this road of alternates, we end up, yeah, whatever.
Yeah. I think alternates gives us a little bit of, that gives us the flexibility to add things in or leave things out, you know, and keep the budget flowing. And also, as if we go through and with, you know, the contingency is looking good, we can drop some of that contingency funding and maybe add a different element in there as well as the project progresses. So it gives us that flexibility to do that.
So some of the other problems I have just overall is I don't, I, it almost seems like a lot of the detail would would matter to me. I see $120,000 for landscaping. What does that mean? What are the parts of that?
Paul might as well come up. He's the one that put some of these numbers together.
You put all of them together and not some of them?
So, so in other words, when, when, when you put $266,000 for playground and seating, you know something about what you're getting.
Yeah, to be clear, Paul Kengas, IOA Inc., Dayton resident. To be clear, the estimate that I provided had a detailed breakdown. Our goal to help kind of synthesize the information for you is to to not include all those line items, but there is a breakdown that that details where all the estimated costs came from, and we're happy to share that with you.
Well, I would personally like to have that because $2,000 garbage cans are ridiculous.
Right. We've talked about a number of things. Really, what, what I think we need to come out of this meeting with is a clear expectation for the funding that's available for the project and how much you're willing to move funds that were dedicated in 2026. As Marty mentioned, the majority of this development will happen on the north half. Going backwards, this park is larger but similar in scope to either Hayden Hills or River Hills. So when you think of, you know, what a neighborhood park, those are two recent examples, and, you know, those are coming in at about half a million dollars. And as we all know, the costs are spiraling. It's good to hear that the bidding climate is strong. That's always a goal. It's really hard for a consultant to do cost estimating right now. Again, it's like a cat in a hot tin roof. We're really nervous. I take a lot of pride in coming up with real reasonable numbers, accurate numbers. Historically, in my 30-year career, I've been two to five percent with many of my estimates. I don't make that claim easily anymore because we've been surprised by some big numbers over recent years post-COVID. So are the estimates high? Probably, hopefully. But we've also changed the scope of what a neighborhood park might be in the city of Dayton. So if CDA A is involved, that changes the infill design. It changes the fencing requirement. It changes whether or not it should be irrigated.
But they're paying for that.
That they're paying for it.
And this doesn't affect our budget or your quote at that point because they're gonna cut those costs.
But it does affect the overall project cost. So when we think, you know, half a million dollars versus something that might be, you know, 900,000 now, that's where some of those differences are. The parking is a significant element. When we looked at the food truck parking, that was a wish list of the residents. We thought we could use it as kind of parallel parking around the outside, so it was kind of dual purpose. But when push came to shove and we realized how much it would cost and shared that with the neighbors, we pulled it back. The current plan has an option for parking on the north and basically replicating that same idea on the south so that we could get to that.
And the price difference, I'm guessing is inflation?
Yes.
Because you're gonna do one this year and one two years from now. That's that $4,000 price difference.
Yeah, I think they bumped it up 10%.
Or cost difference.
Which that's not that.
I know, but it was a question, so I figured once we're on every time.
What's more surprising is pickleball courts were a year ago 40,000, now they're 55.
Yeah, and there was a question among the residents, you know, they'd love to have tennis. There was one real vocal woman that really wanted to push tennis. And I like tennis. I like pickleball, but when you look at the court size and the costs associated with it, tennis is so much more expensive. And pickleball is definitely the more favorable sport right now. I'm sure there are people that play tennis, but typically they need to travel a little bit more. So when you really look at, you know, the park amenities, you know, a neighborhood park wants basketball. It needs a playground. It wants trails. So then it comes down to some of those things that we haven't offered. Sand volleyball was a very low-cost item in the grand scheme of things, but something that they had asked for, so we included it. As Marty said, the neighborhood gardens and the dog park were almost unanimously unfavored, so those were taken out. But back to your original comment, we do have a detailed cost assessment. Happy to share that with you. Marty has it.
Yeah, I didn't include it in this because it just muddied the waters even more. So I put the lines together as just the total number. So the base bid was the total number, the additional, sorry, general erosion control and earthwork. That was just one number. It wasn't broken down into, you know, biologs or silt fence, that kind of thing. It's just the total cost of those elements.
I have to print them really big now because I can't see very well, but this is the level of detail that is available. This was the previous plan. But we have line items with our best guess. There are not detailed plans done yet. That's why we're here to ask you to prepare those plans. But again, these are very similar in scope. A double pickleball is the same whether it was at Hayden Hills or here. So I know what those quantities are within reason. Things like trails might change a little bit. The acreage of this park is significant, so landscaping, especially the seating costs are higher.
I know how much it cost me to landscape my house when I moved in, so the landscaping costs aren't all that surprising, given the size of this is way larger than my yard. And so it's not overly surprising to me, but it is a lot of money.
To the comment, Mr. Mayor, that you made about alternates. I've used alternates a lot in my career. They're a really effective way to hedge against the what-ifs. I never spend the city's money differently than, little differently, but I take very seriously the idea of being fiscally responsible. Even though I'm not paying for it, you know, I was out personally watering sod at Hayden Hills on my own time because I want those projects to be successful. I kind of view the Dayton park system as a little bit of a legacy. Relatively late in my career, I want Dayton to have as great a park system as you can have at the right value. And ultimately, you're the elected people that get to decide how much money gets allocated to that. We try to work with the CIP funding that's available, but quite honestly, the CIP funding that was allocated for these are probably not enough to give you the same parks that you got in Hayden Hills and River Hills. So it's unfortunate that costs have risen as much as I think they have. If the bidding climate is good, and it will be publicly bid, this is over the threshold, so we would expect to get real strong competitive bidding. But I can't control some of the cost increases that we've seen over the last couple of years.
Yeah, and as far as the detail goes, I'm not worried about, you know, getting it down to the grasp. But I mean, for example, the playground and seating area, it'd be nice to know, you know, what is eating up the bulk of that? Landscaping, what is eating up the bulk of that? I mean, some of this stuff, it may make sense. I was more alarmed at the Stevens one because the numbers and the detail, I didn't see, the detail wasn't there for me to feel careful.
I've got it right here if you want to look at it, but I can tell you that landscaping was mainly, in this case, is mainly hydroseeding and large trees. I'm looking at this.
So you did receive the detail. I sent it out to you, the weekly update prior to this council meeting.
Yep.
Even on this one?
Yeah, so I sent you out a Excel file. That was Excel file and weekly update that would not have been this past Friday, but two Fridays ago. I sent out the details, so you can go back and look. That had provided also the concept plans, so you guys had plenty of time to look at those. I did that on purpose so you had plenty of time to get those details. They may not have been broken out as a slide. It's gonna be three grand, but it's gonna show you the playground equipment's budget for $85,000.
When we do the, like the playground thing, and I got a couple of things here. Are we still using the outfit over in Wisconsin for the playground? Is that the only outfit we use?
We normally go to three different companies to get bids from.
Okay. And I'm only gonna do this because I did look at the Ion Garden deal. We had 800 to $1,000 for a park bench in the bid. And I went and looked, and you can buy a metal park bench for 200 bucks.
Yep. Will it last 20 years?
Well, metal, metal will last a hundred years.
Not when you get kids jumping up and down on them and stuff. That's what you pay for. It's like, it's like the trash cans. The minimum that I've seen trash cans for is about 1,400 bucks. You know, will they work? Yes, they will work. But there's a whole different, there's a whole range of things that you're looking at there. But that's where you're starting at, is 1,400 bucks for a plastic.
You can buy 50 trash cans for $2,000 and put one in every year.
I can, I can buy, supply 55-gallon blue drums with the Tups car out for nothing, but do you want that?
Versus 2,000 bucks? Yeah, I would take.
I think if you get 2,000 bucks, you're setting, you know, you're trying to set a standard here for what your parks are looking like. It sets a standard for what Dayton is as well. So I think, you know, if you can buy those things that, you know, they're $2,000, but they'll last you 20 years. What's that? 100 bucks a year?
Yeah.
That's good.
But we don't have to spend 2,000 bucks. I mean, there's cheaper options for sure. It's crazy.
Well, you could pay.
I mean, you wouldn't spend 2,000 dollars for a trash can out of your own pocket. Nobody in this room would.
But I'm.
Maybe Paul, but.
Thousand dollars.
Because he spends just like City Mike.
I think Marty's comment, you know, yes, you can buy a metal bench. It might be cast iron. That would be broken the next week, quite honestly. There is a significant level of quality difference between commercial-grade park and rec furniture versus what you would buy at Menards. So that's not an apples-to-apples comparison. But Marty and I have talked about establishing a standard for all parks in the city of Dayton that either can be done using in-house resources. There's more simple ways. There's ways to order in quantities so that you allocate whatever the number is, $5,000 or $10,000 every three years and you go and replace so that you have a standard, an aesthetic standard, as well as a maintenance standard for those things. And we also talked about pulling those items out of the bids that you're not paying general contractor markup on things that can be installed with public work crew time. Obviously, you're paying those guys, but if it fits within their schedule and, you know, they're already employed and are able to do that work, then let's do that. That's ways that we, myself as a consultant and your staff, can help maximize the efficiency of the dollars. And that's what it's about, you know. I won't sit here and argue whether it should be blue or green or red or yellow, but we're looking to establish a quality, a level of quality, something that's very durable because the life expectancy of these parks should be 25 to 30 years. I'm talking play equipment in this instance. But the same thing with park and rec furniture or the basketball goals, you know, yes, you can buy them cheaper, but they won't last. It's a, it's a different level of use and abuse, you know. If everybody used it the way they did at their home and cared for it that same way, that would be one thing. But the abuse that you get in the public realm is just unfortunate, but it's going to happen.
I think the general wear and tear is different, you know, to what you would expect in your own home. There's a lot more traffic going through these things, a lot more usage on them.
You know, I don't, I don't disagree with the fact that you want, you want something that's gonna handle the 12-year-old kids that are pounding on something or whatever. But we do have this problem where I see once in a while we will, we will use that.
There you go.
There we go.
Meeting's over.
We may use that kind of as a crotch. And I can give an example of the, I don't know what you call it, but up at Cloquet Park. That, that shelter cost us at that time like 40 grand. I would guarantee you that we could have put some of it a lot cheaper that would still be up to this day, and it might even look better. So that, I agree that there are times where we want to spend money on things to get something that's solid. I just think that we need to be cognizant of the fact that we, just because you spend more money for something doesn't mean it's necessarily gonna. And you may be buying, you know, something that's gonna last 80 years, but is it gonna be there in 80 years? Is it gonna be there in 40 years?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Well, there's a few examples, but I think you get the point. So that, and that's my concern is that I don't want to see us not getting what I would consider to be of value.
Yeah, it's always value-driven, you know, what's the cost benefit?
Yes.
Sometimes it's aesthetic, right? You know, sometimes you pay a little more to get granite countertops in your home because they look better than laminate. Do laminate work? Yep, but granite is just that much nicer. And in the public realm, we don't often do that, but sometimes, you know, using real stone as opposed to a CMU block, you know, retaining wall or whatever, the life expectancy of that real stone is so much higher. Is it worth the extra 33% or whatever the cost increase might be? Those are things that we have to consider. And I'm pulling wild examples out of the air, not that we have any of those necessarily in this park or these parks, but I can tell you that your staff and myself are always looking for maximum value and trying to design the drawings in a way that make the most competitive bids and give you the most opportunities to make informed decisions. That's the biggest advantage to alternates is being able to make an informed decision. Just like we did at Hayden Hills, you have, the pickleball court was an alternate on that one. So we knew going after the bid result and when we came to you and said, do you want to approve this for X amount? You knew what that number was, and we were able to make an informed choice to include it.
And I think, you know, some of the parks that we've already, you know, done over the last few years are all holding up pretty well. The Rivers Bend Park over there, the playground in there, I mean, that gets a lot of, a lot of use in there. And it still looks in good shape, you know. We put that in in 2015, so that's nine years old now. So it's, you know, the colors haven't faded on it. The equipment is still solid. I think it's still in great shape. So that's kind of the standard that we want, we're trying to achieve.
Here I've got the additional six and 6.1 acres. We don't have that yet, right?
Everything that's kind of faded back with the white, that is not.
Everything north and control.
That's future.
No, we have everything north, nothing south.
Great, correct. Okay. I like the idea of the CDA ball field. Have we talked to them? Are they willing to pay for it?
We haven't talked to them about numbers yet, but they have expressed an interest in using it and John can speak to it.
Oh, they'll use it.
I want commitment. They'll, they'll use it for free. That's not gonna happen.
I talked with Zach about this, and if we had to put that money in there, we would talk to them before we put that additional money into.
We would, we keep it to us ended up, why don't you have a ball field in, you know, at, in the park.
Here's my idea on this deal.
However, anything above and beyond would be paid for by CDA that needs for their programming.
Here's my idea on this deal. If you're gonna do the ball field, I mean, number one, you're gonna have to relook at the parking lot because 21 stalls is enough, is not enough for.
That's why the additional park is at the south end there.
North and the south would be 42 stalls.
Total, total, both sides.
Yeah.
I get that. I'd like to see two, if you could get two ball fields in there. I mean, you've got a native prairie space, which walk over to Three Rivers Park and.
Well, there's also some pretty large existing trees on that southwest end.
You could leave them there and still get another ball field in, on both sides, is what I'm saying.
Depends on where the trees are, I guess. If you leave them there, if they're right in the middle where the pitcher's mound's gonna be, you're probably.
No, you just start at the south end of the field. I don't know the measurements and all this, but my thought is if you shrink some of this down and you go with the same budget and heaven forbid I'm saying this, you go with the same budget that you spent on the other two parks, whatever that number, three quarters of a million bucks, whatever that number is, that's what you get. That's all there is. I mean, the residents are gonna take whatever you give them, number one.
Well, in fairness, the developers are giving us money for this, correct? This isn't like it's coming from.
It's, it's, it's park fund money. It's park fund money.
Yeah, correct, but the money we're using to fund this, it's not like it came from Scott's taxes, right?
It is purely not tax dollars.
It's not tax dollars.
I understand. Okay, so, I mean, yeah, and we've, we're allotting, if you take out the CDA piece, we've allotted the 1.1 million for it without the parks and water, right?
And without that.
But that's giving you everything on the top, on the north end.
Yeah, that's, that's for north and south end, though. That's what's budgeted for the south end. Minus the trails because the trails are covered through trails funds.
Yeah, so the amount that you see on your, on the bid sheet or whatever is everything for the entire park.
I understand that.
So we're not gonna pay that.
I'm saying you get it down to, you pick and choose out of this thing to get the total expenditure down to three quarters of a million bucks. And then you go to CDA and you try and put two ball fields on the south end because it's gonna be.
Where's the three quarters of a million bucks coming from?
That's what we spent on the other two parks.
Yeah, you just want to reduce the overall.
I want to reduce the overall cost.
How many homes funded Hayden Hills? River Hills was 332 homes, but somebody over there. So this is four neighborhoods that are coming together on this, so the.
There's already a park over in the, you're counting the Sundance, did. There's a park over there already. We already spent 340.
But that bottom corner has to, it's gonna support three.
It's Sundance Greens and then whatever.
So Sundance Woods put a park in.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's the one we put in there, I think it was about 350 or something like that. Yeah, so it's 350 or something like that we put in for Sundance Woods. And then, yeah, we do not have a park in Sundance Greens. And then Sundance Greens technically does not have a park currently.
So this park, this combined four parcels, our company has one big park, are serving four neighborhoods.
Yeah.
So by that logic, we should be spending four times what we spent on Hayden Hills because it's in four neighborhoods. That's why I'm trying to figure out the logic.
I think total.
You're talking 300 versus 400.
Yeah, so if you got Sundance Greens alone is 552 homes, just Sundance Greens. And then you got Brayburn Trails is another 180-ish, and then Brayburn Trails East is another 140. These are rough numbers. And then the potential bottom right corner of southwest, southeast quarter of that is going to be, I don't even know how many that will be. My guess is if you did it all homes, it's probably 350.
So why, why rather than taking park fees, don't we just go to the developer and say, you build it?
Because their requirement is only to give us X number of percentage or the equivalent in park dedication fee, so they won't go above and beyond that.
Right.
So they'll say, okay, well, we'll give you land and dollars, but we won't give you all of this taken care of by us. So they'll say, okay, well, we'll give you land and dollars, but we won't give you all of this taken care of by us.
Legally, you're, you can't, you can. Park dedication by state law, exactly as Zach described. On my soapbox for a minute, you have to keep up with your park dedication fees. When I was the park planner for the city of Maple Grove, and I, I bring that up repeatedly, but Maple Grove is known to have one of the better park systems in the Northwest Metro. Uh, every year we went out and, and kind of took a poll of neighboring communities and even communities all across the metro and got an idea of what they were charging. And we adjusted our, our park dedication fee per residential unit every year. And, you know, you've seen what the costs have done. You can't take a park that you did four years ago for a half million and say, well, we're only gonna give this neighborhood four million because that park now costs 650 or whatever the inflation has done. So it's unrealistic to think that you can do it for the same money, but you can have a similar amenity, a similar size. Zooming back out, the entire city has been planned for park service areas. This is Park Service Area 21, roughly a square mile. Every square mile roughly gets a neighborhood park. That doesn't include the community playfields or any tot lots or special use parks like, uh, Elsie Stevens. But that's kind of an industry accepted standard, a neighborhood park every square mile. And that serves these four neighborhoods and, and any others that can get here.
How much land was dedicated?
Each one of these is five.
Actually, I mean, I mean, restate that. How much did that go into their park dedication? How much did it eat up? What I'm seeing here is if they gave pure cash, our park fund gets roughly four per house.
$4,000 per house you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yep, it's rough numbers, I mean, it's close.
So that's $4 million if it was cash. But a lot of it was land, so I guess what I'm wondering is how much cash, what, what are these?
About half was land and half was cash.
Dollar wise? Okay.
The developers would almost always rather give you the cash than give you the land because they lose the profit, they lose their ability to, to shape it.
David, do you have anything you want to add? We've all been talking for a while.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Uh, I, I do have a couple of comments, um, and these might just bounce around a little bit, but, uh, you know, we've been using 500K as a budget number for a while and it, and it hasn't been right. You know, we've got, we've been more in the 750 neighborhood on these neighborhood parks. And this one is, is bigger, substantially bigger than several of the last couple that we've done. So that it, it comes in higher than that 750 number, it doesn't, doesn't surprise me, uh, because it wasn't gonna work. I'm usually an advocate for us having a big contingency because of how often we kind of get burned on it. But 20% contingency on a park seems like a lot to me and I wouldn't change it now, but I, that seems to me like that's a number that, um, is likely to not be needed because we're not, we're not digging big holes. We're not burning bridges, we're, you know, scraping the ground and, and paving over it to some degree. So I think there's, you know, we should be very comfortable with that contingency number and I don't think we're gonna, I don't think we would need all of that. Uh, as far as, we're not including any budget or any grant dollars in this and we're likely to get some particularly if we, if we do the upgraded, uh, ball field. And I know that's phase two, but I think that there's, we've got another grants for playground equipment and, uh, I think there's, in addition to Hennepin County grants, there's Twins grants and things that, that I know Marty goes after. So I think that, you know, that could bring our costs down, down some. I am concerned on the south end and I know you said there's parking on the north and the south, but the ball field's on the south. If we do go ahead with the, the CDAA standard ball field, we're gonna need more than 21 spots. Otherwise people are gonna park on the street, they're not gonna find that other parking. So I, I have a concern around that. And I don't think we've talked about this yet, but the, kind of the cost shifting from 26 to, to this year. I don't have a big worry about doing that because we know that money is coming back in these, um, on the south. Uh, areas that are, that are phase two, um, get developed as, as neighborhoods. We'll be getting additional funds back into the park, you know, through park dedication fees, um, to rebuild what we're borrowing against, uh, to do this sooner rather than later. And so I, I'm not that worried about that either. You know, I think the discussion around finding value where we can on, on some of these things, uh, you know, that's, you know, that, that should be an ongoing mission for everybody. And we haven't seen real bids yet. You know, I, I think Paul does his best he can with his numbers, but he doesn't want to be wrong on the low side because we don't like that.
Thank you, David.
There's that.
So, you know, the, the total, total number thing, I, I think that, you know, it's a fair question from the resident, why are we spending $2,000 on a trash can? I think that's very fair and I would question that too, but we don't have a real bid yet. And so that's, you know, I think that's to be determined and we can always beat that, you know, beat up some of those details later once we, once we get bids. But I think all of this is just kind of high level discussion other than the amenities themselves, um, until we get real bids on it. So I, I don't want to get too bogged down in, in the details on it until we see those and, and we, we haven't approved any, well, we haven't approved anything yet, but, I mean, all we're being asked to approve here today is to get those detailed plans so we can get real numbers on it. I certainly hope that's what we're gonna do.
The, the problem though with the bids is, is, I mean, those, those bids aren't not, aren't typically something other than the alternates you can pick at. Um, because that developer is doing this as a project and so they may move numbers around depending on what they're doing. So other than the alternates, you're, you're, you're stuck with the, the base, base project. So if something comes in high, you really have to re-bid the thing.
To, to a degree on the structural stuff, but like the playground equipment and the benches and things, you know, as Marty said, they, they'll get several bids and those playground, um, manufacturers. I've seen from my time on the Parks Commission, you know, they'll come in with a, a variety of proposals on how grand do you want this to be? And, you know, what the prices are for those. So there is still room for, you know, some, some value engineering, if you want to call it that, uh, on, on those individual things. But you're right, the, you know, the grading and the paving and all of that, those are hard numbers and you gotta live with them.
Just so I know, assuming we approve this and move forward with it to get the, the bids, it's still with back to the Parks Commission, there'll be more discussion about this. No one's making decisions about will or will not win the park today, so it's just, and my, my concern is it's still with back to the Parks Commission to look at and give a recommendation to council so they can make some recommendation that is within budget to get this done.
Yeah.
So, and I too don't, my only concern about, it's small, but pulling money from 26 to 24 today to get some of this done is not the moving the money, it's that we need to make sure we leave enough with extra because of inflation. So we do the south side, we still have the money left to the south side, so we don't have half a park and half a nothing. So that's my biggest concern is more about making sure that, um, you know, we have enough money for the south side and that we don't just steal from Peter and never pay Paul. I think that's my concern.
I don't have a lot of concern about that, pulling that money in either because unless development dies, which I just don't see.
Not there, not in this area.
All we're doing is borrowing from the park fund.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So I'm not.
My, my concern is we, I wouldn't say we take.
It, it gets the rest of the.
My point is I wouldn't take everything from it and then leave nothing for the bottom half, if that makes sense. And we have to be reasonable on how much we pull up, but I think our, if we bid out the cost of the southern stuff to at the same time, we get bids and we'll have a general idea, we tap an inflation market to it and go from there, that would help us.
We literally can't because you don't own the land. You can't show improvements on land you don't own. So.
Can't ask someone what it would cost if I owned this land and took this down? That's a pretty basic question.
I do have lots of historical data that I pull from for every estimate. To David's comment, the, the contingency would drop to usually use 10% once we actually do detailed drawings and can double check quantities and, and hopefully see some bids coming in this year. So that contingency would drop, um, for the budgeting purposes and then oftentimes we even drop it further going into construction. I think we carried 5% on the 2022 Parks Improvement Program.
I think there was a little light there at 5% because we dropped that to get the asphalt trails in.
Yeah, you know, that, that does guard against the unknowns that are inevitable in construction. But, you know, as we refine, these are concept plans, right? They're, they're pretty good detailed concept plans, but they're still concept plans because there's been a lot of moving targets. There's quite a bit of work that needs to be done to, to get biddable construction documents, details, specs. But there will be a chance then to, to nitpick and, and pick it apart even further if you wish. Uh, I will tell you that if there are things that you just don't want, tell me now because it gets really expensive to pull them out or to make major changes after the fact.
So this is really just approval to get detailed bids.
Mm-hmm. To get plans done and then we'll come back to you again and ask you to go to bid.
Right.
Gotcha.
But it's, do you, what he's asking is, do you want the informal soccer field? Do you want everything on the south end?
I think we should, I mean, I have no problem getting bids for them, that doesn't bother me.
Well, the CDAA issue is a big deal because if you as the council said, nope, we're not gonna allow CDAA to use our neighborhood parks, which has been the stance in the past, was no, we don't, we're not gonna do that. So like Hayden Hills only has the, the backstop and a little bit of egg line because it wasn't supposed to be used for either competitive use or scheduled practices. So that's a big change. There were a number of reasons.
Yeah, for one, they weren't gonna help us with cost. They were just gonna pay and so we would have had to add to that cost to get it compliant with.
And I think that's a very fair stance to take. They should be paying for it if they're using it.
Well, or at least helping.
Yeah, helping.
And we got to leave.
My reason for, my reason for having an open mind to it is, is it's gonna be, I mean, I do see a community park at some day in this city. I think we're gonna have one someday, like in Andrews.
Yeah, we need one.
It'll be 30, 40 years at this rate.
I understand that.
And if we can get two ball fields or something that CDA can use in the meantime, that, that they think is good enough, other than just a farm field like I used to play on.
But to go from a, I don't remember what the delta was, it was, it's been a couple of years, but to go from just something that the local kids could use to something that they can use was a, was a good challenge.
That's where their 139 dollars.
$140,000, yeah.
I would add like, it's not only the cost of the ball field, I think I'd be asking for them definitely to cover the, the increase in that. We're gonna need more parking to fulfill that need as well, so I would be asking, I'd be asking some of that too. The one piece I will add that I would say if we don't do the CDA baseball field is I, I don't know if I'm the only one that hears it, Marty hears it, but I see it online unfortunately, is like, wow, they never even finished the field in Sundance when they did that baseball field. Because it was never designed, it was designed to be for pickup games, it wasn't designed to be a pristine field, right? And I think the, some of the neighbors down there either aren't aware or don't care and they want something nicer than that. And so I think we have to be mindful too of, of, I have no problem with the baseball field, neighbors want it, that's great. I just, we need to have clear expectations of what that baseball field will be if it's informal versus what it will be if it's a CDA scheduled utilized field. Because it will be significantly nicer if CDA is using it, even when they're not using it, it'll be significantly nicer versus if it's an informal field, it's gonna be pretty minimal.
And the thing is, is historically we have had to put out that money.
Yeah.
And so we didn't.
So, and candidly, I'm not, I would not be interested in spending the 140, whatever the number was, $1,000 on it unless CDA was willing to partner. And I've heard from CDA that they want to do that, I know that particularly they're looking for a bike wheel of fields, so, which you're not gonna get here. So I don't know if that, maybe that, how interested they would actually be in forking out the money to make it happen.
So for, on this plan, when we're talking about CDA program field, I mean, you, you can look at Central Park as an example. You know, it's small kids, it'd be a bigger infield than what we have on Sundance, for example. More fencing, irrigation, I mean, those are the upgrades.
Yep, yep.
Sundance Woods was designed to just be that neighborhood dad throwing pitches to his daughter, you know, to practice. It was never meant to be competitively used, but I will tell you, the mistake that was made at Sundance Woods was getting land from the developer that wasn't well vetted. It was too low, I don't know exactly how that came to be, but that land was not ideal for some of the park uses that we ended up having to put on it, so.
And, and I think they took a lot of fill material out there and put a bunch of clay in there.
There was some really dirty material in that site.
So the seed, the grass seed has never taken really well over there over the last few years and then we put the, um, hockey rink over there as well, so that just makes it, you know, worse. So that, we are actually looking at putting some irrigation over in that park. I think that's what's gonna be more common in parks and neighborhoods is putting irrigation in because people want to look out their, their window and see their grass and they don't want to look over and see this brown crunchy field that is their playground.
It's not fun to go play in a brown crunchy.
Well, that's how Rivers Bend was forever. It was, you didn't even want to walk on it.
Yeah, yeah. So I had made some notes at, at the last Park Commission meeting. Hayden Hills, the base bid with the accepted alternates was $497,000. And what's different between this and, and Hayden Hills is we added parking and irrigation and those are another 175,000.
But the irrigation's not coming out of the park's budget?
Correct, I'm just talking about project cost, but that puts you at 670. That was bid in early 2022. So I think it's very realistic to have at least a 10% increase, which puts you at 750. And that doesn't include some of the, the phase two things that we're talking about. So, I mean, the numbers, they don't lie, I hope they're high, but they don't lie. It's a bigger park, there's some things that we're exploring with parking and, and some of those that just have never been considered in the past. So the half million dollars that, you know, okay, Hayden Hills and, and PSA 21, it's, it's no longer an apples to apples comparison, so.
Do you need a motion tonight or is this just a feedback piece?
We need a motion.
So it's not just for this park though, so I want to make sure.
Can we take it park by park for motions to make it easier?
You can most certainly take it park by park if you want to.
So I'll motion for this one, that we move forward with better drawings, is that the next step of this?
Construction documents.
Construction documents for the plan as shown on the screen here, just so we can get to bids. Because I think it's gonna be hard for us to make any real decisions on what alternatives we do or don't want until we know what it's actually gonna cost. And so that would be my motion for this particular, PSA number 21.
Well, are you, are you kind of implying in that that we'll get better estimates?
You'll get revised estimates, you'll, you'll do construction.
I don't think I can make a real decision on anything till I get actual quotes and that's what's.
That's a bid though.
That's, which is not what we're going to, but we have to this next step to get to that step as I understand it, so that's.
So when we come back to you next time, Mayor Fisher, we would be asking for approval to go out to bid.
Yeah.
Like you did earlier tonight. And then from there, we would come back with the bid results and then you would be able to make yea or nay decisions on the base bid, accepting the base.
We go to the Parks Commission first. I would like it to go to the Parks Commission first because I think they're there to represent the parks.
Yeah.
And I think they're trying to be as involved as they can and we should give them an opportunity and it gives the public one more chance to show up. So oftentimes we hear, we didn't know this was coming and we hear this all the time. I want to make it very clear, we get the packets the Thursday before, just like they're posted on the internet. This will come back to Parks Commission and then it will come back to City Council. I would highly recommend, the Parks Commission is the first Tuesday of every month, the City Council meetings are the second and fourth Tuesdays every month. Be very aware of those dates and what's coming and you have the same access, same information for what's gonna be on the agenda that all of us up here have. So just so there's clarity, because I've heard that from everybody that's talked, we've had one day notice and, um, that I would say, you may have heard about it one day ago, but it was posted for everyone. And it's posted on the city Facebook page, the agenda, um, so you can follow the city there, um, to hear more. But I would motion that we move forward to the next step so that, I mean, I, I just want to get to bids so we can figure what it's actually gonna cost. I feel like until then, we're just locked in this perpetual, what do we do? We don't know, we can't make a real decision. So that's where my head's at, for PSA number 21. I would like to do phases one and two and just keep them both moving and get bids for whatever we can at phase one and two, so we know how much money we can conceptualize pulling out of the 26 numbers into the 24 numbers. So I would, I would, I'm gonna bulk them together unless there was a problem with all of PSA 21 as my motion.
Well, do you have a problem with digital documents on phase two? Given that we don't.
We don't even have the land yet.
Yeah, I, I don't think legally I can, but we will have, it'll be designed, so we'll be able to know what the quantities are and, and using the bid numbers.
If you need help getting on that land, I'll call some owners and we'll get you on the land, I have a problem with that and I don't think they're even gonna complain about it. So if that's the problem is you need authority to set up for the land, I'm happy to help facilitate.
No, it's not setting foot, it's just, it's not literally owned by the city yet, so you can't. No, it's not setting foot, it's just, it's not literally owned by the city yet, so you can't.
But we have, we have master plans, we drop a plan, we don't own either, so I don't see why we, this is no difference in that.
I can see we're going out to bid maybe a little early.
Yeah, I think we're getting wrapped up in in construction documents versus bid results.
Results, yeah.
We will estimate it, we'll let you know how that works, but we won't be asking the contractor to put hard numbers to a plan on land that you don't control.
That's fair.
Okay.
And I think we did do some high level costs for the second, the south part of this as well.
Yeah, I'd like to see those refined, too, those are my points.
Yeah, that's fine.
To me, that's going to help depict how much money I would be okay pulling forward.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, we can do that with the bid documents, but we just wouldn't include them in the bid pack.
So I know the C D A communication and negotiation happens outside of my involvement, but that would be an important element for everyone to to come to the table with.
Are we, are we a majority consensus that we're not going to make that a C D A field and the C D A is going to cover a majority of all of the costs associated with that and possibly the parking?
I would be.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, in my mind, like, that being a C D A park, the city's not going to pay for it. C D A is going to end up paying for it.
Yep.
And so if they want to do it, I think when we get to getting actual bids for that chunk, and my mind doesn't change the decision we have to make, is my point. Because we're not, we don't have to approve that money. C D A would be the one approving that money.
To be honest, it's an alternate that's relatively easy to make. It just has to be very clearly stated in the bid documents that this is baseball, this is what City of Dayton's paying for. I mean, ultimately, it's going to be a City of Dayton contract, but by then we'll need to know if C D A is.
Kind of like the things we do with Three Rivers Park District.
So I'll leave it to Marty and John to figure that out, so you guys, all the right people to talk to, so.
So you have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second. Okay, any more discussion on that? Hold us a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I guess.
No, aye, I guess.
Thank you.
It's just for a bid.
Yeah.
It's signed up for a bid.
In reality, we just.
It's for, it's for a more detailed estimate. We're proving a more detailed estimate, so we can prove a bid.
So just a side question about these, well, not a side one, they're already going to brought it up. Was there some confusion about restrooms or will this have access to sewer and water anywhere?
Water, yes.
Uh, we were looking at, the well that you described is a irrigation well for this, rather than using city water.
Oh, that would be.
So it's just irrigation.
It's just irrigation.
Just irrigation, yeah.
The only restrooms would be porta potties.
The restrooms would be porta potties. I think it was at one stage a composting, a vault type.
We talked about it as an option.
Yeah, we talked about it.
But it's a big number.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're probably just going to go with the porta potties on there.
Which is more than somewhere across.
Literally. Okay, so we can now move on to.
What's next?
Iron Gardens.
Oh, no, we'll go to Elsie Steve.
Okay.
Sorry, I I put the slideshow together differently.
Than our packet?
So.
That's always.
Well, you know, I just threw it together.
And thank you for the residents that came out and sat through the entire meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so Paul, you're doing such a good job there. Do you want to? So again, this went through the process, it's had multiple changes. Um, it's been in front of the park commission a few times. Um, there's been various iterations of this. Park commission wanted to see more than just the four things that we had identified, the bridge, um, the performance space, the decorative gate and the signage. So again, I spoke with Zach and we, you know, thought about a few things here. Um, and this is the initial thing that was shown to the park commission about the, um, the extended, uh, performance area with a covered sail type scenario over the stage. The additional paving in the front is the performance area. There'd be some additional seating, um, uh, to the right there, shown in brown. Um, this has been changed significantly since. Um, so these were some of the potential covers that were shown. I added some additional ones in your packet and that aren't shown here. Um, but those were some ideas of what could go over the stage area, the performance area, and a couple of ideas for other things. They had a concrete cornhole, uh, uh, bags, uh, game and some grills there. This is the signage that was, uh, designed for this park and then there was some gates we had to have that controlled access at the original entrance there. That's what Hennepin County are asking for. So this is the latest and greatest that we've come up with. Um, the park commission wanted to see some sand volleyball, um, some additional picnic area potentially, picnic shelter, volleyball court, some additional parking. So we, in the yellow there, you'll see additional parking from what's there already.
So I don't think the park commission saw this, just to be clear.
They haven't seen this yet.
Correct, nor did they, I just want to be clear that we're stating, but I don't think they recommended any of they think of these things because the four things that were shown to them matched the budget.
Yeah.
So just so we're on the same page of what was.
And I think that there was some additional talk that, you know, if we could spend additional money on this, these would be areas that we could do something with. And I talked, you know, we identified some additional funding sources for this.
After the last park board meeting?
After the last park board meeting.
Additional funding services?
Because we're not, so the the irrigated area in blue is going to come out of the water. The trail stuff will come out of trails again, so we're just, really, they didn't have the information, they're making their decision at all.
Yeah, yeah, okay. It's still, it's still money from one of our enterprise partners, but okay.
The park board said, no, we should finish the stage area and we need to do the gates, the signage and the bridge.
Yes.
Because we had shown, uh, the picnic shelter and some of the the little bit of parking that kind of gets handicap accessibility to that picnic shelter. The semi-circular curved parking area has always been part of the master plan, but it wasn't shown to the park board.
Correct.
But that is now what's broken out here in your estimate.
Yeah, I have no problem with the information on the screen, so I'm sure we're clear what they have and haven't seen to that.
Yep.
Yeah, this was pulled together after our meeting.
Okay.
Yep. So, and this is a revised look at the performance area with the seating changed around.
So this had enough detail for me to look at. I'm not seeing where all that money is going. Tell me where that money is going because I don't see, what was the number? Let me get to the number.
The stage is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars and the bridge is two hundred and twenty eight.
The bridge, that's a whole nother, yeah.
And the irrigation's coming out of water, the park's going to come out of different funds.
I get that. I'm talking about the that right there. Um, let me just get to it. Do you remember, Paul, what the dollar amount was for that?
It's a hundred and seventy one five. Yeah, a hundred and seventy one five was budgeted for the rough element and the seating and concrete steps and rails and.
Yep.
Sure.
So where.
I got a hundred and eighty, forty on this one.
Yep, it's different than this one.
Yeah. Well, it's in the ballpark.
But they made changes to it, in all fairness, they changed the seating around.
So.
Oh, on that one, it's on there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So where's that going? I'm not seeing a hundred and eighty grand there. What, what?
Uh, well, the budget estimate on the canvas structure is a hundred thousand dollars.
Is it really?
Yeah, it might be eighty. Did I bump it down to eighty?
Yeah.
Yeah, you had even said in the park's mission, you go, I'm taking, I'm going to use different words, but basically taking a shot in the dark on this. It could be way higher, it could be way lower. I'm taking my best guess, but you did mention during the park's mission, I mean, that you did not, I'm going to put words in your mouth, so tell me if I'm wrong, honestly know how much that was going to cost and we were kind of guessing.
Those were my words at the park commission. Since then, I've had a, a nice conversation with a gentleman from Canvas Craft, which is just across the river, right off of one oh one. A local vendor, they're already evidently an approved vendor for the City of Dayton, he said. But he shared some information, confirmed that what we were showing in concept was workable and actually told me that it could be less than what I had estimated. So I think I dropped it down to eighty on the last printout.
I don't know if that made it into here because that came out.
Yeah, so.
And so what's the lifespan on something like that?
Twenty to twenty five years is what they're.
That's a lot longer than the cheaper one I got off Amazon.
Yes.
Because that one I got for really cheap and it lasted like two summers.
That does require a seasonal up and down. And.
Makes sense.
And the replacement in the future when canvas is needed again. And that was the higher grade waterproof canvas because I know Mr. Solonic wants this to be a great performance area and it should be a nice performance area. But that was an actual waterproof canvas as opposed to just a shade structure. So I actually have a little more comfort than I did at the park commission meeting. The poles, the footings for the poles, that's a big chunk of of that amount.
I mean, is there going to be steel?
The rest of it is the the concrete, the retaining walls, the little bit of grading that's required. The goal would be to have the current roughly oval or rectangular shaped, um, stage area that's there today be at the same elevation of the new area shown in brown out in front of that and there's a little bit of grade that we have to make up and the steps and the retaining walls.
I think what kills us here, and I, we've kind of bought ourselves into this, is those limestone benches. Because they're like twelve hundred dollars apiece and we need thirty five of them or something like that.
That was my next question.
Seven hundred, they were seven hundred.
Well, now they're twelve hundred, according to this, what I have in front of me, and it may have changed since.
Why are we doing that?
I.
And I understand the match.
Poor concrete, it's a lot cheaper than that, sure.
I, that boggled my mind the first time it snuck through. Actually, I take that back, we voted on it and approved it. I didn't see that detail. I would not have voted on it.
Well, my point is that I feel like, what are we going to rip out the current stuff and redo it all? It's going to cost more than just, like, we, we're kind of like bought into this and we're going to keep doing it kind of thing.
Really?
Well, what else you do to expand seating?
Two wrongs to make it right, man.
No, but my point is, like, we're going to have two different kinds of benches.
Maybe, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if if they're twelve hundred, it's this big.
I, I've, I've said.
Would you do that?
I would not have done it in the first place. I would have a problem with it. But the problem I have is, is I think it's going to look really off putting. If we're going to try to make this a premier park, which is what we're calling it now, we're going to have these great bands come in and have these big events, I think.
And there's no way we can use a different material and have it still look fine or have it look even almost intentional?
Colored concrete.
I'd be okay with some of that. Like, I'm, I just don't want it to be like, oh, look, we have stone benches, all of a sudden we put in like metal city benches next to it.
Rain treated.
Yeah, that's what I don't want because to me that doesn't look.
That's fine, but you just told me twelve hundred apiece.
Yeah, that's thirty five thousand dollars, I think is what it came to on this one. Forty two thousand for thirty five of them.
It's the cost of the stone, it's the transporting, which is the biggest cost.
But they should never have been replaced, I'm guessing, in the last photo.
But if you go back to the first photo, Marty.
So divide it by a hundred years and you're good to go.
Go back to the first photo.
Yeah, it was on the.
Keep, keep going. Those will be there forever.
Oh, so with concrete, yes, absolutely. They will be there forever.
I design stuff like this all the time. You don't just pour a rectangle of concrete without a footing and structural rebar and, you know, it's not just as simple as putting a little concrete down.
I, I do agree.
So stone, because they are in four or five foot, I think they're four foot sections. It allows a little bit of movement, concrete doesn't, concrete cracks, concrete has to be, um, potentially refinished. It's a very durable, timeless solution.
And I think it looks beautiful, don't get me wrong.
There is an aesthetic element, absolutely.
But there is a significant cost for each of these that that we've kind of set in place for ourselves at some measure in perpetuity, which kind of stinks.
Assuming that you can't change that.
And they're not the most comfortable, I mean, they're not uncomfortable, it's you're sitting on a stone, so it's not like it's a, you know, a comfortable chairs.
Right.
It's less comfortable than twin stadiums, let's put it that way.
I think when we did this before, we looked at the additional costs of doing it as concrete and there wasn't that much difference.
And I'm not saying concrete's the right answer either. I mean, I honestly would have just had a very nice graded hillside. You could put blankets down on people because that would be more comfortable to sit on than.
Or bring your own lawn chair like Elk River did.
Well, that's what we, when we, when you had moving the park thing at the end of last year, that's, we just brought a blanket and we actually set off of the stone intentionally on the grass because it's more comfortable.
Actually, I thought Elk River's, it's, it's the same stone, it's the same stone. Their river, their band on by the river there.
There is some stone.
I don't know what Champlin did in their area. I haven't been to.
I think their amphitheaters is concrete.
But.
There's no chairs.
Because I've been involved in in every phase of this, I know some of the history as to why the decisions get made. I know that, uh, council member Solonic has had heartburn over the cost of the eight hundred dollar stone, I don't know, twelve hundred dollars. There's pros and cons to each of it, right? But it is a timeless, very aesthetic, durable solution. You you could just grade it. You could put a lot of people in this area as it exists today. You don't have to expand the seating.
We don't have to, we don't have to do anything there.
Right, but the direction we were given, and I think it was that your urging was to make this a bigger performance area, to have a bigger stage and have more seating.
Currently, there's enough for about sixty people there. If you bring some more lawn chairs, yeah, you could fit more people in. I mean, people could bring a lawn chair.
So if you don't want to spend thirty five thousand dollars on on stone.
On seating.
And it's okay to have people sitting in lawn chairs. Then you spend the the money on the the stage area.
Will this entire area be irrigated for the plan?
This area here, yes.
Okay.
That's as good as the grass has ever looked in the time that I've seen it.
That's why I asked. We walk our dog on that.
Game screen? No, I'm looking for a particular picture on a shelter that I seen, but it wasn't the canvas thing. It was, it was made out of wood and, I mean, it was very nice.
The, the, at some point, there was a, I don't know, it was one of the previous pictures where there was a two, two level gazebo, two story.
Go down, two, two photos, three.
Yeah, there you go, that guy.
Yeah.
What's a ballpark on that? Is that anywhere?
Do you have it, Matt? What, what did I put for a number on?
Well, I don't have that, I don't think, because this is just says tinsel fiber element. I don't have the.
Oh.
Structure.
Uh. Park, picnic shelter and the east parking area, that would be just that little bit of parking and the roundabout to get to it was at two hundred and fifty. The shelter is probably a hundred of that.
That shelter right there?
Not that one.
Oh.
But that was just a.
Say this shit and I'll order you up ten of them.
Yeah, I was going to say, so.
I mean, I'm half surprised, but I know how much it costs us to build a house for wellhouse, the, for wellhouse, well five, so it's expensive.
No, the shelter that we've estimated would be a much simpler structure than that.
Are you familiar with the, uh, the, uh, structure that Albertville has, the lines put up?
I think you showed me a picture at the last meeting. Yep.
That's perfect.
David, something you want to add?
No, we just had to.
Oh. So on this one, again, we're just moving forward for more detailed drawings, so do we?
I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with this particular area and personally, I'd like to see the, uh, the shelter. I mean, to me, we need some sort of a shelter somewhere in this park.
Yep.
Could go to the plant.
Before seating, right?
For the still. I think it would be good to help you, to have you tell me what kind of shelter you're envisioning. You know, it's the the larger brown area, the smaller brown was a potential compostable toilet that didn't make it into the, well, it might have played on the line, I don't.
No, it did. Compostable, really? Like the, uh, State Park, the area you want?
Used a lot in the, different than.
I'd rather have porta potties.
Yeah.
Personally.
They're cheaper.
So.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
What are you, what are we, what are we looking at?
The alternative is what other picnic shelter.
Just help me understand, you know, if if you could have your druthers, would it be a shelter like the last photo or a simple structure like we have in Hayden or or River Hills?
That shelter?
You're talking, which?
The brown one. Like the band shelter.
No, no.
No, he's talking about the brown.
Oh, picnic shelter.
Yeah, it would be kind of the family reunion rental space. You could do corporate, you know.
Events underneath it.
Meet and greet.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So like, I thought at some point we were doing something along those lines where the current patio blocks went.
The stage area?
Pergola area. No?
No.
What was the point of?
I mean, to me, that's where we we are going to need something over in that side too. I mean, at some point, I mean, I would think.
At some point, there's a a large building, an event center planned.
Oh, yeah, that's the five million dollar building.
So to answer your question, when we lived in Coop Rapids, we lived by the Lions Park over there and they've got like a gathering spot. It looks a lot like the double roof thing that you were showing. Right, to me, if we're gonna have a gather, people, a whole birthday party is there for the kids. The park was nearby. Like, that's what it was used for in the Lions part of that park. Um, I think that was very well used and utilized when we lived there. We never used it for that, but we would go play in the playground, have always every weekend, see a birthday party there. So I think if the ultimate goal is to have it be the rental space for birthday parties or family get togethers, I think something like Coon Rapids has at that park would be, which is very similar to what you have with that double tiered or kind of what they have at Andrews in Champlin. They've got that that big kind of area with like the kitchen, something like that. There's not any kitchen, but like something like that is kind of what, if that's what it's gonna be used for, I think is what is needed to answer your question for the little brown shack in the.
To me, it wouldn't be a little brown shack. It'd be about a forty by thirty by six.
It'd be big. I understand. Dude, on the map, it looks small.
Concrete floor.
Yeah.
That space is not that big. Would, could it be? Yes.
Is that somewhere in the ballpark of, it's a little bit closer to the river than the two silos that need to come down?
It is closer to the river.
Yeah.
Those areas.
Yeah.
Before they fall on somebody.
That that is one of the coolest areas in that park. You get in the woods and we're showing some fingers of openings, you know, kind of connecting you to the river. But the the trees that are there aren't that great, but it's a really cool spot to do something. And that's why we kind of targeted that area.
So how big do you think that is?
Twenty by twenty?
I think that one was eighteen.
Oh, it's eighteen by eighteen.
It's twenty four by thirty six, I think.
And if we're just, if we're talking about a, are we talking about just a open wall?
Yep.
Yeah, it'd have to be, that's during the floodplain, so you can't buy anything with solid walls.
If the council wants to make it bigger, we can make it bigger. And then if we'd have to go for something else in the park.
Twenty four by thirty six, I believe.
That's a pretty good.
These are all alternatives, right? Cause we're under budget on L C Stevens, trying to figure out what else we can pull in this year.
Correct.
Yeah.
Like I said, they're all just everything outside of the sign, the gate, the bridge and the band area.
Why not just get the detailed drawings on all three of them and then let the parks commission decide what they think and send it to us? Cause all we're voting for is to get detailed drawings and more, hopefully better estimates, but still actual numbers.
Yeah.
I think that area needs to be big enough to, if you want to have it rented for birthdays and stuff, it's, I would go look at whatever the size, I don't know how big it is. The one that Lions Park has in Coop Rapids, they use it all the time. The one in Champlin that I mentioned at Andrews, that one's big enough to hold like, I've had a couple of businesses I do business with have like a thank you event there where they bring people out and have cupcakes and stuff. So like, it's a, it's a, that's like the right size for what I think we want to have up there. And so that's the size I would hope to see to fulfill that area. I don't know what size that is versus what we have planned, but that'd be my two pieces on the side.
Mayor, I just want to make sure that if you don't like anything specifically, we take it out. I mean, that's, there's no point in putting time, Paul's time in there if we go, okay, we absolutely don't want that.
If you don't want limestone blocks, let's.
Let's cancel it. I mean.
I I would like to see an alternative.
I would too.
I I but the problem is, I don't know it specifically. That's the problem. So we can go on to.
Did you need to know that though?
I would like to know, I mean, the only thing, for example, the bridge.
Yeah.
Now, I thought, I, all I see is an X, a a bridge looking thing. And it says two hundred and
Twenty eight thousand bucks.
Twenty eight thousand dollars.
You've got the drawings on the slides in there.
The bridge is the exact same bridge that was detailed in the twenty twenty two.
Right, it's right there.
Right there. I I just cut out the ancillary stuff, but you know, that is the bridge. We do have detailed costs.
I thought that was a gate.
Gate.
It was about ninety thousand bucks.
So how does that, okay, jeez, how does that bridge come in at two hundred and twenty, twenty eight thousand dollars?
It was all the work and the pudding.
It was a soil burn.
Is it the the puddings?
It's the foot.
I remember that being the conversation last night.
We can't go with the alternative of the culvert, even though we tried because it's within the floodplain and the floodway and can't do that. We have to make it.
So we can put in concrete pylons, but not a box culvert?
Correct.
Correct.
What was that box culvert thing different with the south?
That's correct. Yep.
Yeah.
Because it's out of the flood.
It's on the floodway or floodplain or something. So this one has to be engineered to the nines because of that.
Okay. Imaginary line dictated that.
And the reason it's not built is because it was coming in way over the original budget in the twenty twenty two part.
It was like ninety thousand bucks.
So we pulled it. Three rivers pulled theirs and we're gonna rebid it with better deep. Basically, we're being held over the barrel by the person that held the contract. He didn't, he didn't have any reason to to put a good number to it. He was locked in. You've all seen that cartoon with, you know, little skiff that's base bid and the big yacht that's change order. I mean, that was a classic example of it, so.
That's like Scott's dream. Every time he sees any council stuff.
But no, that that bridge is designed detailed. We have great numbers on that. We have high confidence in what those costs are. Our hope is that by competitively bidding it now in the the new package, that we'll get even better numbers than what this estimate was based on.
But the bulk of that cost, you believe, is is the pylon work, not?
The bridge itself is only like seventy five thousand of that total.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, you're just having some metal shop weld something.
I got a welder in my garage, Scott.
Is it okay if I motion that we move this one forward to even more? Sorry.
Yeah, I I I getting back to the
drawing.
cover over the bench or the the thing. Um.
I'm gonna send you a couple of pictures on that.
I don't mind the canvas, but I feel like an actual roof would just be better because like, I I'll give you an example. My parents, my grandparents had a canvas pop up camper north that they didn't leave out. And then eventually what happened is they just built a wood, they just built a wood structure because they removed the thing over the top of it to protect the canvas because the canvas is expensive, to repair all the time. So given that, I mean, those are camper quality. And actually, the company that you're talking about, they were the ones, the exact company that would repair the canvas when it got worn out from the elements. Um, and so I would, I would, I'm open to it. If it's like, it's half the price of new canvas, we could buy two of these over canopies, replace it. That's a great thing for us to know. But unless it's significantly less, I'd rather have a more permanent structure that would be there.
Like a thirty by thirty with a cover on it.
I I'm just thinking like a lean two roof kind of thing. Yeah, the other thing I want to be really mindful of, when you look at that with the way the sun comes in the south, it's not gonna shade anything on that stage. It's only there to keep water off of people.
Correct, yeah.
So I'm not very particularly, I don't, I don't. The goal in my mind is to keep water off of the electronics that are being put on that stage. And that's my goal. So I
Yeah.
Unless the canvas is significantly cheaper, I would rather see a wood structured element. Again, lean to, it doesn't have to be four corners like that. It's I'm gonna sound like Scott. Bunch of, bunch of four by eights with shingles on top, like something nice, but it doesn't have to be crazy, you know?
Can't be a metal roof though.
Correct. Wood's fine. I'm okay with that.
It's gotta be wood.
Yeah.
Metal would be noiseier now.
Yeah, tin is cheaper, but it's gonna sound horrible. So.
They've got other materials now too that are.
But so from my perspective, I don't care whether it's cloth. I I just want something that's cost effective, it's gonna last a while and it's gonna keep the rain off of the stage. Cause it's not gonna help the sun at all. I'd rather spend more money keeping the sun off the people's backs that are watching it by putting something that maybe we only put up for events that is a sale like that, that maybe a little bit cheaper, but then at least blocks the sun. So people sitting there up behind them, it shades all the seating. To me, that's a better benefit to the residents that are gonna be going to the show and spending a bunch of money on the the water break.
You can have some sort of a sale on the west side to shield.
We're also gonna the south side, cause that.
No, I mean for the band itself, for the.
I'm not worried about the band. They're getting paid to perform, I'm guessing, so.
Isn't there like some design characteristics that can help like naturally?
You said that?
Like, make the sound better too. Something like this band shelter like that.
And they they will put up H's and.
Yeah, they're gonna have speakers there.
So can I ask you what, what what's the appetite for budget on something like that? Because we can explore a wide range of ideas.
Oh, it's gonna be less than a hundred and ten, twenty thousand dollars.
You think it would be less than?
Absolutely.
I don't think it would.
I don't think the budget you've shown here is
Without a doubt.
Out of line for that, but that's me.
I I, again, I sent missions before.
You call a guy like Shermer and you say, hey, Rick, what's this?
But we don't do that. That's the problem.
That's the problem.
We.
Well, call, call Shermer up, call Rick and tell him to come bid on this.
Guarantee you, you probably get two of them for that number.
It's in the floodplain, right? So you're not talking wood construction. You're talking metal welded something with a roof on it.
Well, or or concrete.
Or or concrete.
Right.
But.
I don't think that affects your price a whole lot. It's the rest of the structure that's gonna eat it up.
Do we, did I answer your question?
Well, it sounds like you want something for a hundred thousand, but I'm not, I don't know that you can build it for that. I honestly don't think you can build it for that.
We're not changing the size of the of the performance area itself, right?
I think, I think.
You are. You're adding to it.
You've got a hundred eighty thousand dollars going in for the performance area too.
Yeah, the the front of the.
More more pavement.
The more concrete. And that's, is that stamped colored concrete or what?
Okay, I see it now.
Right, it doesn't have to be. It's just, it's just colored brown there to be.
But it's gonna be contiguous with, it's gonna be flush with the, yeah, and that that's the edges too small as it is, so that'll help.
And you've got a hundred eighty thousand dollars budgeted. I don't see a problem with that budget for this, for this and what you're trying to do. But my point is, is if we're able to get
Like Paul does.
More out of it.
Yeah, because he's saying you got a hundred left for the.
We're under budget with the hundred eighty thousand dollars he's got budgeted now, right? We're under budget by two hundred and forty six.
That's with that canvas thing.
Yeah. So if if he comes to me and says the wood, the what you're talking about, the permanent like roof is gonna cost twice as much, then we might as well do this and just buy two canvases and replace it.
Right, right.
Have a, I I'm okay with, my point is, I'm okay with either, but the only goal of this is to keep water off of the band. In my mind, that's the goal of that. If we want to provide shade, I would rather see provided with people attending the concert than the band members themselves.
Yeah.
Well, if it's raining, nobody's shooting up anyways.
If it's raining.
So why do we need it all?
So the question would be.
If it does rain and the band's there, they will.
All all performers want some sort of a stage. They all do.
I got a neighbor kid likes to perform. He'll come up free.
Now who's being cheap?
We're all done getting anybody to come in here with a six hundred dollars.
No to the expanded seating? You do not want to spend more money on on limestone?
Well.
It's thirty five grand?
Go to the modified.
I thought it was, yeah, modified from this.
Forty two for thirty five blocks.
So the previous plan had it all extending this way. We can't really do that because of the topography.
Yeah.
Um, so I modified it to just add to the edges of the existing. So it would be identical. But yeah, it's it's a chunk of change.
I have a comment that Council of Rashad sent me because his computer died. He said, can we change it to concrete and have a limestone face to retain the look?
Yes, for about double.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, this was what was questioned, so I just posing the question.
Yep.
Cause I'm I'm guessing.
I think we just shop around for the blocks and you bite the bullet and you do it.
I'm gonna write this time.
What time was it? Ten, ten?
Three, nine, twenty seven, twenty four, ten, ten.
Yeah, we were supposed to.
Spend the money, I don't care.
Just spend it, bite the bullet.
Well, you're already in, like you said, you're already into it.
Well, that's my point is we're already into this because this is maybe for, if there are alternatives that would look naturally to shift to, I'd be very open.
So but you're still thinking that to have a like building there, to have a roof, a hundred grand is gonna cut it.
I I don't know what you would do cheaper than the canvas type structure that is shown. I I don't think you can do a
And please don't make it red or.
Permanent roof type structure.
Neon green.
You never got a number out of Albertville, did you?
Yeah.
There, did you get a number out of that?
Yeah, a hundred and thirty six grand.
For what?
For that building up there.
Do you know how big it was?
It's it's thirty by sixty.
Yeah, maybe not. I don't know if it's that.
It might be twenty four by sixty.
Twenty four by sixty. Uh, twenty eighteen.
Before COVID. It's a price of twice as much.
So that that.
But it's a nice, it's, some of the wood finished off and the rafters and everything. I mean, it's nice.
So is that worth two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand dollars to you?
Why is it worth that?
Because it was bid in twenty sixteen and it's bigger than.
Yeah, twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen.
Yep.
It doesn't have to be that big.
It's almost a decade old now. That's.
The, we can explore it. I'm just, I'm very skeptical that we can do something cheaper than the option that I've put in front of you.
Yeah, I think it's worth exploring.
I don't think, I don't think it's gonna be cheaper, but I think.
No, it's definitely not gonna be cheaper.
No, cause you have to pay, it's gonna be cheaper by the sale and it's gonna be to put the four poles up.
Again, to me, it's a value thing. So if it comes up, but it's.
Mayor Council vote said, look into it, Paul. That would be great. If it, if the costs come back and you low and you get, it's gonna be double the price, we're gonna go, okay, that's not gonna happen. Or or maybe we do, but.
Did you have an email correspondence perhaps that you could forward?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I could send you the contact. Again, Albertville, it was done in twenty eighteen and it was done by the Lions, I believe. So the city just has to ensure.
Yep.
So can I motion that we move forward to get better drawings and estimates?
A tighter design or tighter.
Sure, whatever term we want to use. If we move this, I motion we move this forward the next steps when you closer getting a bid.
Um, what about the?
There also seats.
The.
Seating?
Huh?
Stones, seating?
No, the
Alternatives?
The park and.
Part, the.
Show us all three alternatives.
We can lump that in.
Yeah. There's three alternatives listed. Just, let's see all three of them.
You talked about for the picnic area, correct?
Picnic shelter in east parking area, the sand volleyball on the west parking area. So we're gonna have to decide whether, basically, I think it's going down to, do we want the picnic shelter in east parking area? Or do we want the sand volleyball and the west parking area? Cause we can't get all three, but we can get either one or two based on cost. So we won't be able to know until the estimates come back in and we can see what that looks like. And then again, we'll go in front of Parks Commission before it comes out.
All this stuff we're gonna determine.
So we're gonna have this in a week.
Sure.
You get the Parks Commission next week.
Yeah.
Did you motion yet?
I motioned.
I seconded.
There you go.
All right, and that's for the other two. All right, um.
This is L C Stevens.
This is L C Stevens.
We have one more left.
We still got the one.
Yeah.
This one's very simple, yes.
All right, so we had, any more discussion on that? All those papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All the opposed say no. All right.
Let's go back.
This is I own gardens now, right?
Yeah, we're going I own gardens.
Keep it under fifty grand. Make a motion.
That sounds good.
Just keep it under budget.
It it, but as a side note, we need to find a way to to not let this happen again, or I I.
Well, Zach, this was a candidate, Zach and I talked about this and I, and I can call in city staff up, but this is probably stuff we should have dealt with six months ago. So I feel like we're rushing through this to get to it so we get it done this year. And I would like to see it done this year. All of these, like all of these parks. And so we just need to make sure that we're thinking further ahead when we're trying to plan these meetings up.
I think we've been in March and April before.
Yeah, I think the mayor council, I think the main thing for us is that we're trying, we're now in not just moving forward steps, like I had mentioned before at the past meeting, it's okay, what does the council want? I want to have discussion back and forth. Um, and having more of a discussion versus just, okay, here it is, just approve it. Um, which may or may not be able to do it on the past. I can't say yes or no, but I can say that we need more, you guys need more time. Based on discussion, I can tell you right now, you need more time. Cause if you would have saw this two meetings ago, we had, if I had a different discussion, I'd have done one and a half a time.
I agree.
So.
You were talking about not taking in parks that weren't public. So so we shouldn't let this happen again.
Oh.
No, I, as far as what I understand happened with this.
Okay, this was, this was, yeah, frustrating.
Not, yeah.
And specifically at I own garden Cypress Cove.
Yeah, yeah, that one, yep.
Yeah, they just didn't want to deal with it.
And I I don't know how we fix that in the future. I mean, what happens if, you know, another HOA decides to bail?
Rapid trails, I suppose.
I'll give you an example. So same Pineview Meadows goes down, you are now looking at Marty the pool boy.
Well.
So that's, that literally, that's what happens.
And that, that was my example of, stuck in my way for a little bit.
You're welcome for that.
That might be a good thing.
And what would you, we would just fill it in and and be done with it because the city can't do with something like that.
But that's exactly what happens. That's the one risk we have with HOAs is that when they own areas and they say, okay, we're just done. And they go like this.
Yep.
What it falls down to is it comes out of the city. And the city has to then pick up where it left off. And now you have to maintain it or fill it in or what.
Or fill it in and sell it and put another house on it. I, I, yeah, I, I don't.
You got it. Yep. That's exactly what happens. Unfortunately, I always come back to the city to figure it out.
Don't sound like a bad.
Wait, I don't think you can fill it in because it'd be park dedication.
Yeah, we can't, we can't put a house on there. We'd have to do something.
On where?
On that Pineview, Pineview Meadows. Just for that example, I'm using this as a total example.
That wasn't park dedication. The pool?
The pool house.
Stereocentication, that would be the HOA.
No, that's private property.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not, it's HOA.
To drive us back to I own gardens. So this is the last one left.
All right.
People have questions, cause we can just motion this one through the next step if no one has any questions or issues with it.
I.
How much money? I can't see it.
We're over budget by three thousand, by the way it sits now. So we're on budget.
It's like eighty, eighty-three, whatever.